Good morning. We opened earlier for executive session with employee business. And so we'll welcome you back to the April 23rd, 2024 morning session for the Board of County Commissioners. And I'd like to start the note that there are two commissioners in session today, Mr. Anderson and myself. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the business agenda.
Do you have anything to add, ma'am?
I do not.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business agenda passes. So we're to that portion of our meeting for public comment. We'll take comment from those in the room. If you're called upon, please come forward to the microphone and be sure to state your name and where you're from. And the same with Zoom. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak and we'll call on you. And make sure you let us know who you are and where you're from, for the record. Thank you. So anyone in the room? Oh, good morning.
Mike Goodpastor, Goldendale. I'm here as a flying monkey, I guess. So some statements here, random mostly. So I'd say that secrecy and censorship drives political corruption. And the jail, only option on the table for the jail is no jail. So much rhetoric about safety and humanity by officials being used as excuse to obey the anti-coop woke agenda. Double standard is created which travels in one direction only, as with the jail. Woke liberals capturing the politician is how Portland became Portland. We should expect officials not to cave to any anti-police pressure group. If the commission is concerned itself with laws, it has, it is far too narrow, selectively concentrating only on the sheriff. It says nothing about a local judge making it possible to spring and admit a double execution murder who is presently out on bail, or the immediate release of a level three sex offender by the county prosecuting attorney or a healthcare worker releasing a fellow who created a hostage situation who expressed suicide by cop. All three criminals were nabbed by law enforcement, not progressive political activists. The least we should expect is that officials don't throw in with and do the heavy lifting for anti-law enforcement elements. Since two commissioners are working overtime to remove the jail and cater to local liberals in the process, I suggest citizens likewise work hard to remove them from office. The anti-Songer detractors have maintained he's racist, common slur Democrats use against any person who disagrees with them. The liberal Democrats are out for a scalp, are never accused of that. Reason the town hall was canceled was due to adverse public opinion to two of the three commissioners. Who will erase the only jail between Stevenson and Yakima Valley? Supposed alarm of employees was an excuse not to have the meeting until a more favorable political climate could be met. This is used a few years ago when liberals took a sentence out of a letter Songer read and tried to spin it as a safety threat to DOH employees. It's likely in the run-up to this disaster that the usual suspects have targeted the jail building, be retooled for some scheme to house this or that big government group absent its original purpose. Was this discussed? If one exists, what is the name of an outside official organization that looks into situations like this and determines if the officials who made the suspect decisions have followed process and rules? Would the commissioners agree to consent to this examination prior to a formal closure? The idea that the commission is a standalone decider looks too much like liberal rhino.
Thank you.
Is that three?
Yeah, that was three. Thank you very much. So we'll move over to online. Is there anyone online this morning? If you'd wish to speak, just raise your hand. I don't see anyone online, maybe in a few minutes. 7211, you just made it. Thank you.
Greg Wagner with C. We've been told by the commissioners that there's a financial crisis. I'd like to know what this financial crisis is. I'd like to know who caused this financial crisis. I'd like to know who's responsible for this financial crisis. I want to know what you're going to do about this financial crisis. Have you failed? You failed to appraise and tax the wind and solar corporations to get money from them to help alleviate this financial crisis. RCW 3632120, number four, says that you can levy and collect taxes per the law. January 4th, 2022, the commissioners raised the sales tax a half a percent for the citizens of this county. So you do have the ability to raise and collect taxes, but you only do it to the citizens. You don't do it to the wind and solar corporations. It's about time you step up and do your job and collect the taxes that the wind and solar companies ought to be paying. They shouldn't be getting an eight and a half percent annual depreciation on their personal property, and that brings in less tax revenue. And Krista Schroder said, the former assessor, that when that happens, we must shift the burden to the citizens. Well, we, the citizens, are tired of paying for these corporations, and we're tired of paying for commissioners to do nothing but help these corporations. Why don't you step up, do your job, and make sure to protect the citizens of the county? The ones that you claim you work for, but you don't work for us. You've forgotten who you really are supposed to be representing. This financial crisis, what's going to happen when the 16 appeals filed by regional disposal for the landfill comes out in their favor, and the disputed amount is $155 million? What if we have to pay just 1%? That's 1.5 million. What if they give them 10%? $15 million. Where are you going to get the money from? We've heard from Jake Anderson that this $35 million, these two lawsuits, that if the insurance doesn't cover it, they're going to come to the citizens and expect us to pay for it. Well, I know that you elected officials are required to have an official bond. And all I can say is, you better have your bonds fully funded, because we, the citizens, aren't going to pay for your mistakes. You're the so-called leaders of the county, and when you make mistakes, you should be the ones that pay for it. Don't say, Mr. Anderson, that the citizens are going to have to pay for it. We're not paying for your mistakes. You don't pay for ours. So it's about time that you all start doing your job. Financial crisis. It's mismanagement of the county by the lead, the so-called leadership that's put us in this position. And we, the citizens, aren't going to take it anymore. We're not paying for your mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Back into the room. Is there any other public comment this morning? It's a race. Good morning.
Kathy Moco-Goldendale. Beautiful morning in Clickatuck County. In reviewing the agenda, I noticed there was no mention of anything about the jail or the closure of the jail. So my question is, what is the status of the jail? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Back online. Good morning, Sherry Bosque.
Good morning, commissioners. I also would like for you two to address, when you make your comments back to us, exactly what is our county's financial crisis? I know you can say, well, go get our 700-page budget and figure it out yourself. But as our leaders, I would like a simple explanation for what is this county's financial crisis? Is it lack of revenue? Is it bills that you owe? I heard Ms. Zoller say, there's a train coming straight for the county. She's staring down the tracks, watching it come at us. Can you explain to me what that train is? Did you mean the jail? I mean, what is that? But most specifically, if you will address this, I don't think you will. I would like to know, what is the financial crisis? It's simple. If we are members or shareholders, or whatever we are as taxpayers to this Clickatuck County corporation of, or whatever it is, I want to know, what is the financial crisis? I heard Mr. Anderson say specifically, and it's on record, that if the county can't pay for it out of the insurance, they're coming for the people. Come on now. Is that really right? And I agree. What are your bonds? You took an oath of office. I haven't really seen too much respect for the Constitution you swore to uphold. But that's another story. But what are your bonds, you know? Are you guys making bad decisions, like building $26 million buildings that probably wasn't needed? Do you have too many bills that you owe? Have you made too many roads for Courtney Road? Was that too expensive so they could build up there? Are you doing too many financial favors such as renewable energy tax favors, which has been brought up for two years? It's been proven time and time again that our county can do the highest and best taxation. They can do one, they can do the other, they can do a combination of all three. Blah de blah de blah, proven by the state. You've been given that proof. You refuse to do that because you do the favors for the renewables and their foreign corporations, and I think that's treasonous. When you are coming after the people, the inhabitants of this county, for more money as you give favors to foreign corporations, that could be looked upon a little bit treasonous. And also, how about waste of choosing to be in lawsuits against your people? Choosing to spend taxpayer money to fight the people in court for under campus. You can pull out any minute and stop the bleeding, but you continue to war against the people who do not want to die on Oak Ridge Road or Highway 14. So what's the financial crisis specifically? Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Back in the room. Shane.
Boy, don't you have to choose your words carefully. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I'm talking to a lot of people, and I've grown increasingly concerned by what's going on in this county. And I come to the, kind of come to the conclusion that there is a financial crisis in this county. And the appearance is that it's being, our county budgets for years have been mismanaged. And we're not bringing in enough revenue to adequately fund a number of things, including the sheriff's office. My concern is that the sheriff's office is being scapegoated, and the jail is being targeted as a result of our budgetary fiscal crisis that we're in. Several weeks ago, I met with Jake, or I saw Jake at the Central Committee meeting for the Republican Party, and I was talking to him. And one of the things I said to him was that the citizens are entitled to transparency by the Board of County Commissioners. And you need to disclose what's really going on in this county and communicate it adequately to us so that we understand what the issues are that you're facing. You're really not in this alone. You're supposed to be the executives in the county, running the county. And there's never going to be enough money for everything. But I'm very concerned that the jail, jails, the sheriff's office budget has been cut a number of years in a row, and they're not small amounts. And I'd like to see you fully fund public service or a public, public safety, which is the sheriff's office. Also, the sheriff's office is not really responsible to provide mental health services. And, you know, we, one of the issues seems to be that we have great expenditures that are uncontrollable with regard to healthcare or mental health care services. This isn't the sheriff's fault. Those are unanticipated expenses that you can't really plan for, other than putting money aside for contingencies. So I'm increasingly concerned by what I'm hearing from people. And I would, there's been a mention by at least you, Commissioner Zoller, that there was a task force. I've heard that several times now, and I would like to know what this task force is, when it was chartered, what its deliverables are, and are we only targeting the jail with this task force as, don't saddle the jail with more expenses than they're really supposed to be budgeting for, is what I'm primarily concerned about. So don't already know what the target is and then shoot for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Back on Zoom. Good morning, Roger Nichols.
Hello there. I wish that folks would help out this poor new reporter covering the city council or the county commission meetings by please stating their name and where they're from. And I wish you'd kind of quote on them when they don't do that. Mr. Shane, I don't know what your last name is or where you're from, because I'm new to covering it, and I don't want to misrepresent you at all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Was it, okay. That's great. So back to the room. I think, was there someone else that would like to speak this morning? Okay, back online. We'll give it a second. Is there somebody? There you are. Good morning, Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Gilbert. The sheriff refers to the area I'm from as the Communist Liberal West End. The sheriff was in Las Vegas for what I understand he spoke about going there for a training, which was the Constitutional Sheriffs and Police Officers Association. From what comes out from video and from news reports, that's not a training. And if we're going to talk about budgets on the sheriff's department, you should be having trainings where you're actually doing CPR in a way that is correct and can actually save lives, as was the issue with the young man who died in your jail and was tagged that the CPR that he was given was inadequate. And that is a lawsuit of some $20 million if people are concerned about what's barreling down on this county. The idea that a $5 million-plus budget that the sheriff's department has is inadequate is ludicrous. You don't even have childcare in your county, which allows people to work and pay those taxes that you need for the growth and development of your community and your county. And the idea that this issue about the humanity and the lack of care that was done in the jail is something that you can toss aside is also ludicrous. And it is not, it is not under any part of the Constitution to treat people less than. People keep bringing up the Constitution, and they bring up the stupidity of people being treasonous on this board. That is a ridiculous statement. It is ridiculous because it is not based on fact, and there is a lack of facts that are going on with some of the commentary. I think that the reality is, you may show up in a room and speak in support of the sheriff's department, but there are also countless emails that are not happy with the way that things are conducted. And when the sheriff says that the buck stops with him, the buck stops with him, and he should step up and lead as if that was the case. We are going to continue to speak about the horrific actions that happened in that jail and that those need to be addressed. And the mental health of the community, the issues that go on in this community concerning mental health and the lack of resources is real, and that needs to be addressed, and that's not going away anytime soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. Back in the room. Another chance. Online. Anyone else this morning? We'll give it a couple of seconds. So we'll ask one more time in the room. If not, we'll ask one more time online, and we'll move to regular business. Okay, so we'll end public comment for this morning. And Commissioner?
Would you like to go first?
Sure. You don't have great notes. Well, I think I can address it in bulk in regards to the jail statements, and instead of targeting each person. You know, it was what I was talking about with the train coming down the track. That reference was to pending and potential litigation that is really, really damaging to the county as a whole. It isn't just one department or one elected that serves the burden of what happens with those litigations. There's outcomes out of those that are very damaging to our entire county, to each department. Last time I looked, yes, the sheriff does have an obligation for safety, health, including mental health within the jail. Working with everyone else to design systems to address those situations is crucial, but unfortunately, we inherited where we're at today. And that's a pending litigation and potential future litigations that are going to be quite a big issue for all of us at the county to get through this. And we did not seek this out. We inherited this. But as the executives of the county, it is our obligation to pick up public health and safety and budgets when there is a problem. As far as the budgets, I can say we're kind of in a transition as the landfill floated this county for many, many years. And it was an awesome, awesome endeavor. That landscape has changed. They are facing things with their industry, with competition, with competition for contracts, which then in turn hits our fees here at the county, because we make a fee for each contract that comes in that they negotiate. And as those contracts switch or change or dwindle, our monies are impacted. And this last year, they were impacted in a big way. So that causes a budget crunch where everybody has to adjust, and we have to try to spread the money out over all departments to keep public service moving under that amount of money for all departments. When you get unintended consequences such as litigation, it doesn't touch just one department. If that diminishes funds or money, then that diminishes funds or money from our entire budget for the next year, where we have to realot that money across the board. So it is a tough subject to talk about budget crunches and where we're going with that. We need to diversify. We need to do better at our economic development, and we are. We, the Economic Development Department has reconstituted. We have some great people working. They're making great strides in the first few months that they're working. And I have all the faith in them that they're bringing in things that are going to help us with some of that diversity. And I look forward to that. What else can I tell you? The jail status, the task force really didn't get a name until later on when we were working, but we were talking about the problems that we saw coming, that freight train coming. And I was probably actually the one that went to Human Resources and said, I see, I feel like I'm standing on a train track. I see what's coming. I know what these litigations do. We're, we need to start having this conversation. What can we do and how can we do it? What can we do to help? Where's this going to go? And that's a very, very big picture, because like you all know and feel in your heart, it impacts the employees. It impacts the partners, which are the city's Department of Corrections. It's a big, big package. Right now, we're working through all of those huge array of questions that we had. Minimal questions, our finances, how do we do transportation? What would we do if this happened? So we're at that point now where we're having actual sit-down workshops with those partners to say, how will this impact you? What would you see we would need to do? So we're at that point now. So we're getting closer to what different scenarios could look like for the jail situation. Let me see. The town hall being canceled. I think what this needs to come back to is, as county commissioners, and if we call for a meeting, we publicize that meeting under state law. And the clerk of the board does that. She does it ahead of time, well ahead of time, under those RCWs of when we have to have those published. They not only go to the newspaper, but they do, a printed statement goes to the radio stations as well. And that is normally past history, what's always been read. The county commissioners are calling for a meeting for this purpose on this date at this time. The narrative was changed on that, and that became an unfortunate situation that caused conflict and emotion and problems for the larger amount of the general public that had planned on attending, and they became wary of, would they get to speak? What would the temperature of the room be? And it transitioned out of, not that people couldn't come and speak about the jail, but that fear was for the general public, that's all that would be spoken about in a loud voice. So I made the decision that we, under a whack that allows me to do that, and I don't, I think, do we have that here? Okay. That allows me to do that in a situation that I see might not be in the best interest of the public at that time. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to reconstitute that meeting and reset that meeting and try that town hall again, because we will. Okay, thank you very much. So for now, I think I will turn that over to Commissioner Anderson.
You should go first more often.
Do I cover all yours?
Mr. Goodpastor, I don't believe anyone that sits on this board is anti-law enforcement. I think this board is always fundamentally chosen to fund our law enforcement agencies and are, it is one of the core functions of county government. And I'm talking to you as well, Shane, that funding of that is one of the primary responsibilities of county government on top of all the other ones we have. Granted that, you know, nothing except for the 911 system is underneath the Board of Commissioners. Everything else is under other electeds, and so it's a negotiation of trying to set budgets that are realistic, because we only have so much money. And if we take from, if we give to one, we have to take from another. And there's, you know, for every dollar we spend, there's a constituent. There's somebody who, who needs that money to do the good things that we do, providing services to Clickatuck County. Mr. Wagner, we do have the ability to raise and collect taxes, and you are correct. We did take the other one half of a percent of the income tax or the sales tax. We don't have income taxes here. That was a hard decision, and we did that multiple years ago because we were facing this fiscal crisis at the time. We've seen it coming. We've been taking the appropriate steps. I can tell you that Clickatuck County still has the lowest sales tax rate in Washington State. We still have the lowest or second lowest property taxes in Washington State on average. We are one of the lowest taxes in Washington State when you look at the overall tax structure. That gives us levers that we can pull that other counties can't. Other counties are in the exact same situation that we're in, but they've already pulled all the levers, and they're still running out of money. The reason that we've been able to withstand this for such a long length of time is because of the dollars that we get from the landfill. Those dollars don't spread like they used to, because the landfill revenue is not going up, it's going down. With the three contracts, we lost about a million and a half dollars. We'll have an update this afternoon from the landfill. That's a huge impact on a county budget, especially when those landfill dollars primarily go into our general fund departments, things that offset property taxes. It has a huge impact on the services that we can provide moving forward. When you spoke about $35 million in insurance, I don't believe I used that number, Mr. Wagner. But we do have limits to the insurance. All insurance companies have limits. Once you go over those limits, you, if you're sued personally, are personally liable for that. We, as the county, would be liable for anything over those insurance amounts if we have to. And it's happened all over the United States. You've seen in Oklahoma where there was one lawsuit in the entire county and practically bankrupted. This can happen. We're not Oregon. In Oregon, they have tort reform. Washington, we pushed for tort reform for a long time. We can't get it through the legislature. It's a huge issue. The, you know, the lawsuits of today. The, you know, the lawsuits of today are not like the lawsuits of the yesteryears where your insurance should cover your lawsuits. When you say us paying for our mistakes, the pending and potential litigation did not come from departments underneath the Board of County Commissioners. They came underneath another elected official. Have a conversation with that elected official, sir. Because we, being the executives, just have to find the way to pay for it. When we're spending money on litigation, that's dollars that we can't spend on officers and everything else in the county. Sherry, renewable energy tax favors. Clicktack County is a subdivision of state government. It is, everything that we can do has to be given to us by the state legislature. I am just as mad as you are about the renewable energy tax favors that are given to the renewable energy companies. I have no control over that. That is your state representatives that created those tax incentives that harm Clicktack County residents. We have spoken multiple times at the legislature about fixing that. We spoke last week, and I believe you were online listening to it, that our primary move going forward for the Washington State Association of Counties for this next legislative session is just that. Addressing the tax burden shift, that's our number one policy goal that I'm going to be working with WASAC about. We've attempted before, and it got hijacked by the energy companies, and the legislation has changed. When you're a rural county fighting in Olympia for our constituents, you're fighting against the West Side many times that don't understand our way of life. They don't have the same priorities of us. And I have no problem if the state wants to give up their tax revenue, whether it be property tax revenue or sales tax revenue. I have a problem when the state makes decisions that impact the local portion of those shares. And that's what we have to fight for so that when these projects do get built, we get the sales tax revenue and we get the property tax revenue. So yes, that is a very serious issue, and we are addressing those issues. Shane, you made the statement county budgets have been mismanaged. The county budget process is almost a six-month process. We have a financial, an amazing financial team who works to build these budgets, who works with the other electeds and department heads. We go line by line through these budgets. We, in the first two years that I was a commissioner, we cut out all the fluff. Because remember, a budget is a not-to-exceed amount that they're well-planned to work within. We cut those budgets based on the financial situations within the county. And people have had to come back and ask for more money multiple times. Different, in, that's not unnecessarily a bad thing. Because what we don't want is at the, at the end of December, these departments or other electeds go out and spend a whole bunch of money buying a whole bunch of supplies just so they use up their budget. So then when they come to the budget next year, they can go, well, I need as much money because I spent it all. We've had that happen. That's one of the things that we've dealt with. And it's happened for years in this county, especially when we were in good financial positions. That's not happening anymore. There. As things continue to get tighter due to these issues, we're going to see more supplemental budgets. Gabrielle, when you talk about mental health, lack of resources, and it's real, you are 100% correct. We have not have outpatient behavioral mental health services in this county for almost three years. It is being seen in the jail. The jail is our de facto mental health crisis area. And a portion of that is because we don't have outpatient treatment services. We are going to be providing outpatient treatment services by July 1. And we have to because this is necessary. We're in the contract negotiations with the MCOs so that we can get this done. We are providing crisis services. When Comprehensiv left the area, we were left with no services being provided, and we're doing the very best we can. But I will say that our whole behavioral health program, not a county dollar is being spent. It is all coming from state resources and state revenues and the MCOs because we don't have the dollars available to spend on that. And my seatmates have tasked me with the negotiations on that to ensure that the MCOs are paying everything in the cost of our program so that we don't have to supplement that. Talking about where are we at on the finance side? We've got the landfill reduction in revenues. We've got a reduction in the sales tax revenues. Our REIT taxes have nearly cratered as interest rates have went up. People are not buying houses. People are not selling houses. The turnover. That's had a huge impact. We get 1% more money per year off of our general property taxes. That equals about $50,000 a year is all. I can promise you that inflation is much higher than that. Everything costs far more than 1%. That creates a delta that we either have to raise revenues or reduce spending. And we've been doing the reduction in spending across the board. We've done the raise of the revenues by taking the other half. We've also had departments and electeds, primarily an elected, that has spent beyond their budget without the budget authority. So we had to do an emergency budget amendment. We have an amazing finance team that is willing to work with all of the electeds so that we can find these issues out months in advance so that if there has to be changes in service levels, those can be taken. So it's not an emergency decision. We also have the increases in step increases that the county employees get for their tenure. We also have increases in the COLA, which is, and we have the increases that are required by our union contracts that go out for three or four years. I can promise you that just those alone equate far more than the $50,000 we get in tax revenue a year increases. The only good news that we have, which is only short and sweet, is that we're getting really good money on our money. So our reserves, we're getting about 5.3%, where my first two years in office, we weren't even getting a half of a percent. That's, that's helping to fill some of these budget holes. But we also know that when interest rates start coming down, those revenues are going to go down as well, and we have to plan for that. So I really appreciate everybody's questions today. You're asking the hard questions that keep us up at night. You're asking the questions that we have to wrestle with all year. When it comes to budget time, nobody comments on the budget because nobody wants to read the three-inch pages, three inches of it and the thousands of hours that go into creating it and deciding upon it. And so, yes, we are tasked by the voters to be the executives who decide upon that budget. I can promise you, we take it very seriously. And the other thing I really appreciate, I didn't hear any personal attacks today during public comment. And I really appreciate that because if we're going to solve these issues, we need to be talking about the issues. We don't need to be talking about the people or their personalities or our issues between each other. We need to focus on the issues because you know what? That's what the voters task us to do. With that, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so end of public comment, and I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Do we need to?
Madam Chair, I would, I've got it.
Okay, you got it.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with nine items, noting that number two will be polled and put under unfinished business this afternoon.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes with number two polled until later this afternoon. So payroll warrant and certification?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $140,284.75. We do not have payroll benefit warrants for the date ending April 22nd, 2024.
And I'll second. I'll step down in second. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accounts payable warrants passes. We're to that time of our morning. I see our planning director is sitting with us already. If he'd come forward, Scott. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning and happy 42324. I think it's called a calendar room, what our today is. I think there's something special that happens every day. We just often miss it so. And there's something unique about a day. I like to try to remember to look for it that day. Speaking of, it's a great time to be in Clicktack County. It's, I think Commissioner Anderson said it's one of the two months of the year that it's green. And I've been able to travel quite a bit recently. Bickleton Roosevelt, the Bickleton Highway, beautiful part of the town. Snowden, I got to go up there a couple of weeks ago. And then this week, through Clicktack. I've, my wife, who used to live along the Clicktack River, and she'd take, go down that really steep grade down to the river to a swimming hole. And they'd sometimes bike up. I don't know how they biked up that hill. But she showed me that one time when we were dating, but I've not been past there. So never been to Clicktack till last night. Beautiful, just amazing, amazing place everywhere I go. I had a job with the state of Oregon that I thought was going to be the most beautiful place that a job I'd ever have because I got to travel up and down the Highway 97 corridor from Klamath County, the California border, all the way up to Hood River and the Dals. But boy, this not only rivals it, but I think Clicktack County is even more beautiful than that. As far as my update, comprehensive plan outreach meetings, I've had some really good meetings with some citizens recently, active citizens who have given some input into it. One thing I've realized as far as trying to get out to like six different meetings, time as well as coordination has been difficult. But I have the recommendation to start working through some community councils. So I've, I'm trying to be trying to put together a schedule to work with potentially a larger community council meeting and try to invite multiple councils and have it Zoom. I've had some people express from the councils that they would and have wanted to get together with others in the past, and that might be a good opportunity to do that. So my thought would be to, rather than try to schedule a bunch of meetings, try to schedule one meeting to start with, and then go from there to who might be interested. So that's where I'm currently at with the comprehensive plan outreach meetings that we're looking at. Just reminder, Board of Adjustments, we're still looking for another member to replace Matt. We met with, I had a team-to-team meeting last week with our selected consultant. It went very well. They, the focus seems to be on, and I understand when they went through the selection process was focused more on the current projects, the applications, the more complex ones. So we're looking potentially at using them for some of the energy projects, shoreline permits, zone changes, conditional uses. These are the ones that I think we could use some stronger findings and support for our findings if, when they are controversial. But also they're ones that can pull away the team from work that they're currently doing and significantly for time. So I see us wading in slowly, seeing how it works, trying one or two, and trying it and seeing if it's working for us and going from there. Also, I can see us using them if we do get the grant for some of the technical aspects of that work. Planning Commission, May 6th, they're a hard-working group. They noticed that they've got some fairly, I don't want to say controversial, but a lot of public interest in some of their upcoming hearings. On May 20th, there's a Wilson Monroe rezone up in Snowden. They don't anticipate being able to work on the critical areas ordinance, so they agreed to have a special meeting in between. And I think that they may be willing to do some more of those. I don't know if Dave Bart is still in the back of the room, but I don't want to commit them to that, but I was, I was pleased that they were willing to have a special, separate meeting to specifically address critical areas ordinance so that that doesn't get put on hold because of other projects going on. Coming before you on May 14th will be the Bingeon Point Business Park Shoreline Substantial Development Plan, a permit and conditional use, and that, there'll be a recommendation from Planning Commission before you on that date. We have some site visits this week. Lori and I are going to be going out to Under Canvas, James Dean Aggregate Site, and a couple other areas. Snowden area. So just more time that we're expending, which is real valuable to me to get out in the community and to see some of these, these projects firsthand. Other current projects, you see what some of these are. I won't, won't go through them, but there are ones that we're currently working on. And all three of those that we list, I feel like we are making progress on week by week, so I'm glad to see that. That's really all that I think I have. I don't think there's anything on the back today unless you have questions.
That's great. You're doing great. I see things starting to like transition off that bigger list.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. Yeah.
Keep doing that.
And good idea on the community councils. I think that's, it's interesting for them. I don't know if they've all ever had a double council meeting.
Summit.
Yeah, summit. I was trying to give it a name, so that's a good name for it.
It might be a good opportunity.
Yeah, it's a good way to do it, I think, and get them started talking to each other, and you getting to know them is really important. Thank you for the extra workshop for Planning Commission.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
When I was on Planning Commission, we did them all the time, and it worked really well because we had so much on our plate. So it kept us moving. And then also site visits. Seeing it on the ground for me is totally different than seeing it on paper. It's very crucial, so.
Especially because you can see it from the neighbor's side too, and even projects are approved, you can understand the value of making sure the conditions are followed and you follow up on those.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Well, I can't add a whole lot more than that. The summit is an amazing idea that never even crossed my mind. So it is nice having a new set of eyes and thinking about it and maybe creating a way that we can keep the community councils updated. You know, with, you know, when we enter into that conversation, you know, about the policies, the overall county policies, they're going to be really important to be at that table and to have them working together and thinking about it ahead of time, I think, would maybe take hopefully some work off you, not add to it. So great idea there. As for the rest of the projects, keep doing good work. And I'm really glad that we waited until you were on board and getting to this point before we moved on the consultant so that you could get what you needed for your help. And that goes a long way. So thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott. See you soon. So Department update with Director King, Emergency Services. Good to see you.
Oh, they are.
Oh, are they? Did I, yeah, I skipped Jeff Hunter. They are not in the room.
Do you have any miscellaneous reports and comments?
Miscellaneous reports? Sorry, Jeff. That was my bad. Yeah, I do. I did not see reference to, did we do an announcement for the KC PETA special meeting tonight from 6:00 to 9:00? Because there might be more than one.
Isn't it a regular meeting?
Is it a regular?
And we don't do that. They do that.
Okay, they do that.
Richard's office.
Did we need to state that there might be one more than one commissioner in?
We would do that at the end, down at the bottom.
Okay, I just didn't want to miss it. So I have nothing. Do you have anything? Or miscellaneous reports?
I did a little bit of well-monitoring training with Keaton last week on the West Side. To get him up and running, I can report that from the wells that we measured, even though that we are down on rainfall for the year and snowpack for the year, the wells that we'd measured were, were still holding good. And so for the start of spring, we, we saw that three-foot dip and then back up. So, and then they're within the long-term range. So that's really good, at least over there where we were at. Other than that, everything else that I've been swamped with has been bridge-related, and so I don't, I could give you a little update if you want.
Sure.
So we brought on Kiwit, who's going to do the design and construction of the bridge. They have moved into the office, so they are onsite, working on it. So by the end of the year, we'll have, you know, a good portion on the design, and we'll have everything planned out. Right now, our big focus is on, going to be on fundraising. We've got $360 million so far. And then we'll be able to raise on top of that about 50 to 100 million in revenue loans through the federal government. And so we've got Scott Adelta. We, we need about 50 more million from Washington and 105 million from Oregon. And I had a meeting with Representative Helfrich on the Oregon side, and he's the, the ranking Republican. He's also local to the gorge, and it's on his radar, and he's gonna, and so we're, we're talking heavily about the transportation package for next year. That's where you get your dollars is in transportation packages. So really excited about where we're at. We're one, one more away from this is a done deal and we're building. So, and then we had meetings, I can't remember if I mentioned, with Kiwit, the big kickoff meeting, and we brought in, or they brought in the best bridge engineers from all over the world. And so we got two days of working with them, coming up with two kind of parallel paths on how we're going to get this designed and built. And so it's, it's a lot of work, but it's really fun.
It'll be interesting. It'll be interesting. I keep waiting for that design.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to see. You're up. I tried to get it away to Mr. King, but he said no. Thank you very much.
Okay, I assume the consent agenda went through. I didn't pay any attention. Sorry, I was doing something else. Um, we have no pay estimates this week. Um, I think that's about it. Go ahead with, uh, where we are with construction, please.
All right, the construction program, the twenty twenty-three crushing contract, the contractor finished up in Matson Coring is making move up to Fisher Hill. Bickleton area paving, we have a pre-construction conference this Thursday. And they're planning on starting the paving operations on the twenty ninth or the week of the twenty ninth of this month. Sundell Old Eight, we're waiting for the contracts and bonds to be returned by the contractor. So we get that project underway. On the design end of things, the data collection, ball banking, fieldwork is complete. Same thing, we're waiting for the. Final product to be delivered the end of this month. Sounds like they're still on schedule to do that. Uh, Sunnyside Road Overlay, we're working through the beginning stages of design on that one. Bridge repair bundles, waiting for a contract to be signed by our consultant to begin those designs. And other preliminary work continues on the Snowden Road Scoping Project and three safety projects.
Okay, East Side Group is preparing for our two, um. Are one of our capital projects, they're brooming the roads in preparation for the overlay. And they're doing shoulder work also in preparation for the old overlay. West Side, we're crack sealing. Um, and on the upcoming facilities, the first concrete pour for the sail barn is scheduled for this Friday. Superior Court remodel, um, we're actually ahead of schedule. I, we're cleaning up, we've got a few things to finish this week, then we're cleaning up. And setting up for court next week. Um, there's an archery event this Sunday at Joan Fry Arena. Uh, Fuel Islands moving forward, uh, we're installing, um. The overhead doors on the beef barn this week on the west end. HVAC contract, if you look outside, they are on site now at the courthouse. The crane comes in tomorrow. Um, radio tower sites, that's still scheduled for the thirtieth. And a couple of quick follow-up-ish or a couple-ish, not issues, but. This is our annual time again for the Binge and White Salmon cleanup. Um, been working with McKenzie in solid waste. She doesn't have any grants. We looked at our budget, which is extremely tight, but we could probably squeeze one day. Out of, because essentially road does the work and it's kicked off to, uh. Facilities pays for it because it's not a, that is not considered a road, uh, project. So we're. Uh, I said I would check with you guys, but my recommendation, we do one day for them. As opposed to two, they've asked for two, we said, you're gonna have to find somebody else. What we do is, is, uh, we have two guys there, they pile everything in a big pile, we put it inside the dumpster. And then compact it down. Republic gives them the dumpster as a deal. Um, the other, if the other, um. Um, areas grow to the size of that, but I just don't see it. They just don't have the population base. For a Lio cleanup or a Dallas port, they order, they have a, they have the walk-in dumpsters, whereas Binge and White Salmon, they just have too much stuff.
So what's the pro- approximate cost to facility?
Two thousand dollars a day.
Per day, two thousand dollars. And that's to have a machine on site to pick it up and dump it in?
Machine and two guys. Two people, one to operate the machine and one to, uh, facilitate. The, uh, we could talk more about it. I, I, the only reason I'm recommending we move forward is. It's because we kinda, you know, we had, I end for it anyway. But eventually White Salmon, Binge and may want to get picking up the cost or getting somebody to do it. That's what we told them this year, you're gonna have to find somebody, but it runs through our solid waste department. So. Uh, the county's always been part of it.
So we don't have the available dollars in our solid waste?
I checked, um, and they, I don't think they do.
Do we know the marketing that's went out? Hasn't it been for two days?
It has been, and it still will be, but they're gonna have to find somebody. I just can't, I can't swing it up my budget for two days.
Got it.
Um, and I told that to McKenzie, and so if they could find it in the solid waste or if there was a grant. But, uh, last I heard, they don't have, don't have it. There's no grant available.
Um, what are your thoughts?
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, that's why I asked for your thoughts first. I don't want to move a machine in for, you know, a day, pull it out, have to bring somebody else, bring a different machine in, pull it out. That's just additional cost and time. Um, would we be able to let, uh, City of White Salmon, uh, operators operate our machine for the second day? We can't do any of that. It's nothing we can do near locally.
Now, we pull it out anyway every day. We don't leave our machines, but it's, for us, it's just right up the hill. I, the cost, the cost to bring the machine in is not the expensive cost. The expensive cost is paying two guys overtime. For tho- those days and the cost of the machine.
I'm just thinking, is there any way they could do the first day and just pile it next to it or what they can throw in? And then, then we show up and dump it in and do it on one day?
Uh, they get quite a bit and McKenzie, you know, again, I've been asked all the years I've been here, we've done it. Um, but we never coordinate it. And there's been years we've only done it one time. And there's been years we've done it both days. There've been years we've done it no days.
What'd they do when we didn't?
They get, they get somebody to volunteer. They get, you know, one of the contractors to come in.
Got it.
And do it as, as, you know, a donation or. Um, so I, my guess is, is that's what they'll try to do. Um, we looked at it, it would really, I mean, normally we could have probably done both days. Except for, as everybody's well aware, if we had, uh, the January storm. That we've done a lot, you know, provided a lot of damage. And again, we tried not to come back to the board to ask for more money.
Okay, let's look into it more.
Uh, McKenzie.
Yeah.
Hate to tell you, decision has to be made today.
I know, I know. I'm thinking, let's look into it more. We'll make a decision this afternoon.
Okay. Okay, um. Dallas Port wastewater rates, it's that time again, we have to start thinking about it. Um, we looked at it yesterday, spent some time on it. Uh, because they come, like they go into effect January or June first.
Okay.
The new rates were. So we looked at a couple of different options. Um, our reserves in that fund are going down because we've been spending. Um, we have, we have some need for, you, you need to have reserves in that fund. It's a proprietary fund. It must have reserves to cover something like this. That happened. I got a call about three o'clock in the morning together last weekend.
Big blue pipe truck?
Because this, again, it was taken care of. What this was is this is a pressure main that goes from the sun ridge lift station to the gravity feed. And if you look at the little indention there, that was done probably when the line was put in. Because it was, um, done with native backfill. And it, a big rock sits there and as that thing vibrates back and forth over the years, then it creates a weak spot right there. And then it'll provide a crack. Once it starts cracking, essentially, so what was happening, it was leaking. Only way to fix that is you gotta replace that piece of pipe. To do that, you gotta hire bishops to function as your lift station. So what happens is, you know, you can't tell people they can't flush their toilets. So there's a reservoir in the lift station. When it reaches a certain level, the pumps kick on and they pump it out. So you bring bishops in, when it reaches that certain, bishops pumps it into the truck, trucks it down to where it would normally go. Puts it back in the manhole and it goes back into the system. So this, this cost costs about ten thousand dollars. Again, we're not going to be asking for more money. There is some reserves and some other ways to cover this, but that's why we need to have reserves. Um, we also have quite a bit of capital that sits on the outlay that is coming up. What we have to do, we don't know. We're gonna try to, yeah, we keep it as limited as we can, but just knowing that we have capital. So we looked at increasing rates and we talked to PUD and what they're increasing their rates. Throughout their systems and I've talked to the city, which I'm not gonna diverge. So they'll have their own meeting about that, but they're gonna be increasing their rates quite considerably in the next four to five years. So ours have sat after the big rate increase. We looked at a ten percent rate increase and we thought, you know, that's quite a bit. That's really what might need to happen, but that's quite a bit after we just did twenty-five percent. So then we looked at three and that really didn't seem to be enough. So our recommendation would be five percent rate increase for this year. So what that means in numbers is the current, current cost of a ERU for Dallas Port is sixty-one sixteen a month. So at the five percent, it's sixty-four twenty-two a month. Again, we understand people are getting crunched. But at the same time, just like the theme of earlier this morning, there's not a lot of budget. And it is a proprietary fund and it should stand alone. The only way to do that is, I hate to say it, keep increasing rates to the point where they. Where it become, can become self-sufficient. Now, is that ever gonna create, get the two million dollars? No, you're gonna end up getting loans, but you gotta have enough to be able to pay the loans back when that time comes. So that's where we're headed. So our recommendation is five, we don't need to know today. But we need to make a decision fairly quick because remember we have to advertise and we can, we can do it. We can do another meeting if the board so chooses, but it's not a huge rate increase. I don't know that you would have to. We typically, we always send out a letter telling everybody that we're gonna increase the rate.
Can you get us a, a list that shows what the rate increases will be for the PUD? And then how ours compares like you did last year?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, and then bring forward your recommendation with that information, uh, that'll help us make a decision.
We'll have that for you next week.
And then also include in that our capital facilities plan and what that delta is on that amount. So that we can at least make the pitch to the public that this is where it's at. Um, please also let the public in Dallas Port know or the Dallas Port Community Council that we're gonna be talking about this. We don't want them to feel like they weren't part of the conversation.
Right, we would still have meetings, um, and I'm, we're making that recommendation, we're just getting it forward. And then it would still be done in a public hearing.
Right.
And the question is, would you guys want to take it? Does the board want to take it down to Dallas Port, have it here? Um, you know, it's something that is still needs to be done because it is a public utility. It still needs to be done in a public hearing. So they will still get their opportunity. Um, we're just, because we'll send out the letters prior to that. Um, we can say that Public Works is recommending a five percent, not just leave you guys silent to that. And that you haven't decided, so that's.
That would, you know, that's the, the information that you're gonna give us to make the informed decision. I would like to also be emailed to the community council so they can get it on their website. Um, there's a lot of chatter in Dallas Port as normal. And so we want to make sure that Dallas Port knows that, you know, that we've been talking about this. I know that there was rumors going around that it was going to a hundred and fifty dollars and two hundred dollars.
I know, I heard that saying.
And, uh, per month. So I want to make sure that they understand that we're talking, that the rate has to go up so that it is self-sufficient. But that we're, we're, I mean, and I know, I think the city's looking at doing multiple over the course of time to have that conversation. So we can't decide what it is next year, but we can say this is how much money we need to raise. This is what we're gonna recommend this year. This will be our recommendation next year and year three. And if we can bring it forward as a three-year recommendation, that might at least calm some of that chatter about two hundred dollar rate increases.
I would be careful, uh, I'm just, you have, you have my experience, I'd be careful about doing a three-year recommendation. Because we're sitting out at a two million dollar, uh, two point two million dollar, uh. Capital outlay and in the utilities typically, EUD does it. I've done it where I work, you, you don't want to go out more than one year at a time because you don't know what's gonna happen. Um, you know, we can, we can have a plan, but, and we've done kind of an outlay of where we are. But I don't know how far you want to get into depth because this can be. Yeah, because then you literally, if you go too many years out, we've done a model that goes out. But it shows it going broke at twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. But there's a lot of variables in there. So that's why we don't float that model because we don't know what we'll get the money for on the loan. We also don't know if there's an availability of getting grants. We have to assume worst case scenario that we won't get a grant and that we have to do it in a loan. Right now, this wouldn't be the greatest time to go out for.
So I remember our conversations down in Dallas Port. And what we were talking about is you've got your operations and your capital.
Yes.
And so what we're saying is, is due to operational expenses and everything, we're going to recommend five percent on the operation side. If we're gonna go out for a loan, then you would have, you know, your, your, on your bill, you'd have your operation side. And then you'd have your loan repayment side. So it would be separate from it.
Yes.
So this is just, this is what we're seeing operationally. This is, you know, five percent. This is, you know, what it's gonna take in order to operate the system.
Yes, we are actually proposing the five percent, not that, that, you know. Not for, because operational, the twenty-five percent that the, we, that the board agreed to last year. Has squared them away as far as operational. But what it doesn't do is start building reserves to get you prepared for the loan that we know is coming. So we still have to get, we, we have to create more of a reserve than what we have today. To pay for things like this, because our reserves are going down and they're almost to where they're flatlined. And that's never a good place to be. Because again, I'd never try. We've always said this at Public Works, we've been pretty proud of this. We've never come to the board and asked for more money. We've always found ways to do it. But if something, something happens, we get the reserves down too low, but then we have to come and say, look, we don't have the money for this.
Well, and I don't, for me, it's not a surprise. I think we had these conversations last year. And if I remember right, when you raised it last year, you were still under everybody else. We, we kind of brought them into the.
Yeah, we brought them into, yes.
A little bit, but now we're moving on into real business.
But we will get you the stuff with, uh, for, like you asked, so we'll have all that. And then, you know, we can talk more next week on when you want to schedule the hearing, that type of thing. But yeah, we, um, we always send a letter out like we did last year, telling them what Public Works is proposing. And then they have the ability to come in, talk to the board. Because ultimately the board has the final say.
Great.
Okay, anything else for us?
Seth got off easy today.
We'll change that.
Okay.
Keep up the good work, Kelly.
Thank you. And Mr. King, thank you so much.
I had faith you could have got it done in fifteen minutes.
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Good morning.
Copy. Just a few things since I submitted it last week. If we're not in the time crunch, I don't believe, then I'll.
You've got a lot.
Go through it as usual instead of expedited. Did, uh. Approved the, uh, consent agenda item, thank you. That will keep the stacker beat ready. That will keep the Stacker Beat Radio Site sublease, uh, going on for another twenty years. Uh, with a minimal annual increase. We were happy with that. Four hundred dollar a year increase versus some of the others that we have. In the Public Safety Radio System, performance and functionality, we're still operating. Uh, normally for all users' purposes, uh, however it is, in a temporary state. Repair after the storm damage mitigation. That, uh, final repairs are scheduled and I'll talk more about that in a second. Um, maintenance and repair, there's a lot more than going on that's on this list, but. Um, the Bickleton Site Generator Cooling Fan was replaced successfully. And, uh, that's back in normal operation. Uh, the winter storm damage repairs, permanent replacement. Um, and mitigation of the failures over the winter storm. Back in January and February. Um, are scheduled to start, uh, next week, April twenty-ninth. It is estimated to take approximately four days, include, uh, four locations. Three radio sites and the, uh, prime site at emergency management. Uh, we have got some savings on one of the invoices. And a quote that we got, the invoice came in last. Um, we're continuing to work with Clickitad County I T Department Director, or Manager. The potential use of Starlink as a resiliency, uh, connection to the internet. Uh, because right now, we have internet failures and that compromises both our radio system. And the nine-one-one dispatch functions. At some point, so we're looking for additional resiliency there and we think we have a good plan. We've also been in communication with. Other nine-one-one centers. To discuss what they do. Some of them have like, what was yesterday's meeting? Five different. Redenning internet connections so that it'll fail over. And they'll have some resiliency. So currently we only had two and now we're looking at having three in future. The Gogotha Butte Copper Ground Wire Theft Repairs that I've been, uh, mentioning for months now, uh. Was completed. Um, thankfully Benton County, it's their site, subleased there. Um, they took on the responsibility and the cost of repairing that on everybody's behalf. At the site, so there's no out-of-pocket for us, which, uh, I did anticipate. We would have to make our own connections to that ground system. Once they repaired the ring, uh, but that was not the case. So we've seen some savings there. Um, also been in contact with the, uh, radio manager at Kitsap County. And, um, there's a potential for us to be able to receive surplus radios, uh, several of them. Um, in twenty twenty-six when they changed their system over to digital. So that would, um, allow us to continue operating our system in the current. Configuration for years more, the more of those radios we have. In our inventory that if they start to fail, we can replace them. So I'm looking forward to that potential. Um, the Juniper Point Site has had some issues in the last month. Um, I've been up there personally twice, responded to, uh, generator issues. Um, and then I had to send our Gen Tex up there to do the final repairs. Also at that time, found the security fence, had some storm damage, uh, from over the winter and, um. The chain link fences come loose on the whole south side and part of the east side. So we're looking into, uh, options to get that repaired. It might just be buying a whole bunch more clips and going up there myself and putting them in. Um, the prime site, we had a power rectifier failure, um, and approved replacement of that. Unit and repair of the bad one. Any questions on the radio system and maintenance side of things? Uh, the cellular service provider outreach project has been on hold. Given to, um, a limited time to look into that. The people that I have talked to on this list have been supportive of participating, uh, in a group. For that purpose, specifically the school superintendents that I reached out to, so. I will continue to work on that as time allows. Um, the discussions with the, uh, A T and T FirstNet rep. Were less than productive because of the, you know, their limited ability or willingness to wanna. Put new towers in. When they're still trying to build out band fourteen, which is true FirstNet, uh, in our county. Not all of the A T and T towers that we currently have are FirstNet capable. Uh, lease agreements, um, as I've had on the list for a while now, P U D is continuing, um, to work with us on their expansion project. Facilitating that, um, for the Stacker Butte and the Flat Top Site. Things are looking good at Stacker Butte for either the consortium there that we sublease from. To allow them to have their own space, um, but if it turns out that there's not enough space there, then, uh. We have agreed to let P U D use some of our space. To put their radio system in as it is a vital location for them to expand their system. And Flat Top is still in the very preliminary stages as we'll have to work with the D N R. As the land holder and we're the prime lease holder. And the other leases at Juniper Point, uh, have stagnated. Blue Mountain and K V H, K V H is trying to make some decisions and I've, um, counseled them on their options. Uh, they're considering taking their, um, repeaters out of the Juniper Point Site. Um, so we're still talking about their final decision, but that. Sublease agreement has expired as of Jan one. And the lease agreement with Blue Mountain, uh, formerly Gorgonet, also expired Jan one and, um. They have ceased responding to me, so. Gonna have to take some further action and, and, uh, possibly send them a notice to vacate to get their attention. The last time I got them to, to reply to me, I had to, uh. Threaten to start that process before they responded. I'm not sure what's going on over there, but it's not only me, the, um. The site manager for Stacker Butte, which is the chief at Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue, is having the same issues, getting ahold of them. They have to update their lease the same as we just did. So I will continue to work on that because we do not want to kick them out. But, uh, if we don't have an agreement, I have to make a decision eventually. Um, the Wardjik, um, as you can see there. Um, continuation of what's been going on, however. The project that I let you know about five weeks ago, um, in the meeting to give presentations to state legislators from Oregon and Washington. Um, was canceled by the Executive Committee. Um, which is now controlled by entities out of Oregon. So I'm going to be dealing with that in the most diplomatic way I can. However, it was, was not handled appropriately in my opinion, so. See how we can work further with them or, um. Pull out of that group because it's not in our best interest if they're gonna continue to act in that way. Um, the radio project, you heard from Public Works, um, security camera, final installation. It is scheduled to start in conjunction with the storm damage final repairs, um, next week. So they'll have tower crews in the county working on that and they're planning to go up. Um, to Satis Pass and install that. Other camera and hopefully get it online. This time around, it was tested. On the ground in, in, uh, my facility. And proof of concept that it actually worked before they went up and put it on the tower with the tower crew. So hopefully that will resolve the issues we've had the last two cameras. And nine-one-one call taking, I'll turn it over to Phil.
Good morning. So that, uh, first item has been standing there. Uh, we're still working on it, but it tends to fall back. Uh, a little bit with everything else going on. So, um, on staffing, uh. We have a happy committee, as great as that sounds, um, it actually is great. One of the, uh, things that. I continue to work on is making sure that our employees are happy and some of the things that, um, typically in the dispatch world affect that is. Um, staffing, um, personality conflicts because everybody is a type A strong person. Um, equipment and, uh, inter-office issues. And so as long as we can keep all that afloat, then people are happy. Um, and it varies back and forth. So, um, we have a great team and they're, uh. Trying to recognize each other to make sure that, you know, we stay positive and recognize the little things that everybody does. As far as the public education portion, um. This is one of those parts from our nine-one-one grant, um, that is required. And we're more than happy to participate in. So, uh, we were able to do, uh. Continue the puppet outreach from previous months. Uh, we went out to the Glenwood School, presented there. Um, we were requested. Um, to come out and talk to them on the issues of, um, the lack of cell phone tower and the ability to call in. An accident and how we can best do that in a community that has very limited, uh, communications. So we went through some options there, um, including, um, those that have, I believe it's the Apple iPhone. Fourteen or newer that reaches nine-one-one, um, through satellite connection. So that is, um, one of those new features, um, new tech, um, that's going out there. So. Haven't tested it because I am a Sam, so person, so. But that is the idea. Um, so we, um, we had two communications officers go out and do a nine-one-one education and job fair at White Salmon. Um, both education on calling nine-one-one and, uh, about a career in communication center. We have several students that were interested filled out a form to come and then do a sit-along. Um, and we also, uh, began communicating with, uh, I think it's WorkSource that has. Um, the possibility of partnering with us for some internship positions. But no cost to us, so that we're, we're following up on that and see where that leads. Um, collaborating with the Golden Dell School F F A, we did a, um, affair and. It started with presentations at the middle school a couple of months ago, um, and those students, um. Partnered with us to do a safety fair at the elementary school. And we were able to help coordinate with them, uh, responders from the other agencies as mentioned there. Um, Golden Dell Fire, Clickitad County Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, G P D, D N R and, um, K C E M S. And so they did a fair where all the students got to come and participate and, um. Go through vehicles, go through equipment and get some safety information. So that was pretty good turnout. Um, and we're hoping to continue that collaboration and spread it throughout the other schools as well. So. We are in discussion with the other schools about that. Um, as far as training and operations, uh, working on the task force for cross-discipline training that goes on. Uh, we're still working on the nine-one-one dispatch training standards and certification. Um, that is in its, uh, final stages. Um, so we will soon have that hopefully from, uh, State nine-one-one. But we are in line to meet at least most of those certifications. Um, and then it would just be a, take care of any other new employees to meet those as well, so. Um, school participa- uh, participating in the school emergency planning and S R P, uh, continues, um. Active collaboration with the E M S Council on training and opportunities, uh. We were able to assist in the new E M T class that finished up on, um. This month, actually a couple of weekends ago. So we have a whole new number of E M Ts across the county for the volunteer fire departments. Um, and so, uh, I was able to participate and help, uh, teach a couple of those classes.
Do we know how many people passed?
Um, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Um, I know that, uh, every student that, there was one student that did not finish the class at midterm. Every other student finished and from what I'm hearing is, um, they finished the class, they passed their, um, hands-on testing. Now they are doing their national testing, um, and most of them are doing the Yakima Center. Um, they do that national testing and then they, um, and so far it's going good. Everybody that attempted their test is passing. And I believe it's somewhere around the number of fifteen.
Fifteen, plus for mine. It was on our Facebook page. I was gonna look it up.
Yeah. Um, so that's, that's, uh, really good because we need more people to answer those tones when we page them out, so. Um, a lot of great people in our, in our county stepping up, so. And Jeff taught radio communications for them as well, so. Um, that's going good. Um. We are working on, uh, Makeitad County and a statewide nine-one-one peer support, um, again, um. Started a team in our dispatch center, uh, because this is something that Jeff and I have been trying to do and it keeps, again. You know, taking a, a, a backseat with everything else going on. So getting a lot of help from our dispatchers on this. Um, getting information on what we need. And so we're, um. The idea behind that, I think I mentioned at the last update, is, um, to be able to create a peer support team across. The entire county involving our fire departments, volunteer fire departments and E M S. Along with us and partner with the peer support that the sheriff's office has, um, and that way. We cover everybody. Um, and we're able to provide that service, um, to those volunteer departments that don't have the staffing, but. Do a lot of that work on the scene as well, so. Um, and it helps us to, uh, close the loop on our side of the calls, so. Um, so we are working on that, see where we can get. And that is also one of those big, huge parts of, uh. Keeping our team happy and being able to be, you know, resilient and ready to take the next calls. Um, we did have a computer outage on Saturday, the thirteenth, um. We had some issues with our computers connecting to the rest of the network, um, so. Early morning, uh, Saturday, got a call and, uh, I called our, uh, I T manager. But he came out with me, dispatchers, you know, took on what we have in place right now. Uh, they are ready to, uh, go with pen and paper and do the job that they do. And rewind it all the way back to like the seventies. But it was ready to go. Um, there was no lack in service or any slowdown in the service we provide. Um, we were able to get laptops going pretty fast, um, and, uh, because. The system was still running across the county, just our computers were not able to connect. So, um. We went with laptops and they were able to remote into the system. Um, bypass the, our network in our, in our facility and, uh. That went on for about almost a full shift, twelve hours. Um, so a big kudos to the two dispatchers working in, uh. Awkward situation, but they pulled through. Like I said, there was no, uh. No changes or lack of service that we provided. The public didn't see it.
Oh, how did the laptops connect to the internet then?
Um, so in our facility, we do have a couple of different, um. Ways to connect to internet, including like Century Link that does not go through the county, uh, network initially. So they will V P N into the network here. Uh, first that's connecting to our building first and then connecting here. They'll go from the secondary Wi-Fi system that we have. Uh, and connect V P N into, uh, the system here at this facility.
Similar to the way the law enforcement officers use their M D Ts.
Okay.
They have a remote client on the laptops.
Right.
That gets us in.
Okay.
And that connection begins here from the laptop, so. Um, so, yeah, we were able to bypass our system in our facility until they were able to figure. Um, so yeah, we were able to bypass our system in our facility until they were able to figure out um which piece of equipment in the firewall uh caused the issues and.
So was it the firewall that was out there?
Yeah, yep, it, it just. I don't know all the technical terms, but they figured it out, they fixed it and everything was back to normal, so. And um.
And we can give you more details on that if you'd like.
Please, I know we're talking about doing a major change out there with our whole internet service, so I wanna.
Yeah.
Understand this one.
And, and so, and, and part of those changes and part of what we're doing is um the little bits that we already have, like the CenturyLink secondary internet, you know, and if that didn't work, we have the Starlink that we would be able to remote in.
That's what I was wondering if you were using the.
Yeah, so well, likely this time CenturyLink was up in the.
Although it did fail us again. Yesterday morning?
Yeah.
Early morning, our fire alarm started going off because the CenturyLink phone lines cut out.
Yeah, so that, that's where, you know, otherwise we would have gone to the Starlink next and still been able to remote, um. We have our, my work cellphone and the cellphones there are capable to, to do.
Hotspot.
Hotspot.
That's what I was wondering if you had to do.
Yeah, if, we, we would figure it out, um but um and so now we're working, uh I'm working on making um what we learned from that and, and make it more seamless.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, you know, if I'm not available at six AM to run over there and set it up, the dispatchers can just push a button and it switches over.
And you guys have the laptops.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we have, we have a couple laptops, we started switching a couple of years ago from an actual PC to just having laptops so that I can take my computer home with me.
Right.
Um, so, and then I called Jeff in the middle of the day and needed us another laptop, then he ran his down and just smooth sailing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's pretty good, um and I like, I'm, I'm actually pretty proud that, you know, it, there is no disruption of service to the public or to uh the agencies that we provide service to, so it was pretty seamless. Except for the two dispatchers that pulled their hair out.
They did good though.
They did good, yeah.
And while we're on nine one one, I'll direct you to page five at the bottom, um since I submitted this, we had a nine one one directors meeting. Actually, an advisory committee meeting first and then a directors meeting last Thursday morning. Um, the nine one, state nine one one office uh put out some, well, there was lots of things in that meeting, I won't go into it in detail, but for um today I'll give you the heads up that the state nine one one office is gonna be making some proposals to the state legislature for changes um in the way that that's funded, both in the nine one uh phone tax, uh the way it's collected and maybe increases to it and the, the way it's distributed, um which is part of what funds our nine one one grant. Um, and then, you know, the, the money that goes directly to the state, um and how that's utilized and also request from the legislature to change the nine one one offices uh funding from uh appropriations to a direct appropriation, so that doesn't have to go through their budget process every year. Uh, right now, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of a ten million dollar um amount of money in that fund that built up and doesn't get appropriated by the legislature every budget cycle and um so they explained it to us in detail. But it would give them more flexibility in supporting us in our nine one one call-taking functions, uh reimbursements and so on. Do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, other, this, and you know, when we talk about the tax, because it is a tax, it, it is the nine one one phone tax that is in place, no other tax, and it's strictly designated for nine one one. And so the uh what they have over um what was appropriated, it, it varies from year to year based on the amount of um tax revenue that is collected and the appropriation that is requested at the beginning of the year for the budget based on um in the word left. Ba- based on their um projected, um, you know, revenue. So there tends to be sometimes more revenue than, than they projected, um but they're not allowed to spend it. And so um the way that it would help us is as we have an emergency situation where we need equipment replaced, we can reach out to the nine one one office and possibly access these funds and they would be able to support us through that. So they're hoping to get support in being able to do that.
So when they ask, I'll be asking you as well to, you know, speak to the legislature and our representatives to, to back those requests. We believe they would help us.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Just a little reminder on the burn ban thing, um I'd heard back again uh from Elk Meadows. And that'll have to be a conversation we'll have to complete.
Yes, that is on my list.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to catch up.
The, on, on that last item, um they're not looking, uh the, the last item on the uh nine one one tax um has projected discussion for two to three years, maybe next legislative.
Session.
Session, thank you, um and the, that is being brought up because the last time that it was addressed was in twenty eleven. Uh, so a lot of things have changed and everything costs more money.
Okay, moving on to the emergency management program. The uh, the school emergency planning working group had another meeting yesterday, continued to have good uh collaboration in that meeting at uh two of the three law enforcement uh agencies were represented yesterday as well as a number of the school superintendents and principals as well as ourselves. Um, and that standard response protocol that I've mentioned before, the ESD one twelve, State Office out of Vancouver, um is been putting together a push and I'll just read what their announcement was yesterday that all districts in Macaiakam, Cowlets, Clark, Skamani and Clickitad County, meaning school districts, um have agreed to adopt the standard response protocol, uh terms and practices, and we're the first district, state district in the state to take this regional approach and it demonstrates our collective commitment to school safety. Um, so that's a positive direction that we've been able to um manage since last year's swatting event at Columbia High School to uh collaborate with school districts in our county and emergency responders uh all across the county to improve school safety, there is also um standard response protocol seminar being scheduled for May twenty ninth. Um, that a number of us in the county plan on attending um to further that process. But um more good work is being done there and as me and my staff can, we are taking the time to participate in that. Uh because I see that as a positive steps. And the uh cell phone service coalition concept that was presented at the last meeting, or actually, you know, back in February's meeting um was well received, so again, I think I'm gonna get traction there as soon as I can get time to uh form that group. I'm preparing to, to present the standard response protocol to the cities, haven't had a chance to do that. Uh, we did make the presentation to the Clickitad County Employee Safety Committee a while back, um and waiting for them to present that to you so that you can uh decide whether the county should adopt that standard response protocol. And we've been in contact with certain businesses in the county, larger businesses that have a number of some of the employees that are also interested in uh adopting that protocol so that everybody is on the same page, using the same terminology and the same basic principles. We see that as a very positive thing.
That's awesome.
Um, the PUD wildfire camera project, um and they're using the Oregon Hazard Lab as their uh vendor for this, they're going to be um putting in at least three cameras this year. Uh, myself and the Oregon Hazard Lab technicians um went to three of our sites um last or on Wednesday, the tenth, and um to do site surveys for feasibility. And we're gonna move forward, I think at all three of those sites, it will be feasible, um and more to be planned in the future, which is a good thing, and these are the uh the cameras that use artificial intelligence to detect smoke, what they perceive as smoke in their field of view, they do a rotation on a timed basis, and then they report that as an alert back to the uh operations center for these cameras and a live person looks at that, determines whether it's actually wildfire smoke or just mist or something else. And then contacts the appropriate um nine one one call center for that location. Uh, it's the, it's not the same service or equipment that the DNR just put at Diamond Gap uh late last year, but it is the same concept and, and process. So we're happy that BUD got uh funding for that and is gonna proceed. Uh, that could help us in earlier detection of wildfires and just as importantly is better locations, a lot of times if nobody is on the ground at the fire, we get calls of reporting smoke and we page out for smoke investigations and it takes, can take a considerable amount of time for those field responders to actually find the source and more so the road that gets them or what their access needs to be or direction they should come out from takes a lot of time and uh this system should be able to give us uh GPS coordinates where, where the base of that smoke column is. And then we can figure out the rest much easier from there.
How close with, with only this many cameras, would they be actually be able to get on triangulation?
Um, uh, so that was my question, in the past, it's always been about triangulation, two or more cameras, but they said their system can give you fairly accurate coordinates even with just one cam, um using bearing and distance calculations. So, yeah, I don't know if they're using some sort of a laser that gives them the distance out, but it's all overlaid with maps and like I said, it's all artificial intelligence and they're confident in the cameras that they already have in place all over Oregon and Washington and California that, that they can get us really close even just one detection from one cam. And then when you add two or more, it just gets that much better.
Okay, yep.
So we're excited to support that and then take advantage of that resource. Winter Storm, um mentioned uh this before, all the numbers are there, the total for all entities in the county um so far was eight hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, um the county's portion, so emergency management and public works was in the five hundred and seventy one thousand dollar range just for emergency management and our public safety radio system at the seventy one thousand dollar uh mark. And what we've been told, um I believe it was just last week, that um that approval for that um damage assessment from the, at the federal level for the state to proceed and then give us our reimbursements is in the president's office and just awaiting that step, FEMA has outdone their thing and it's, it's highly unlikely that the president wouldn't sign it, um so good news is the, all county entities should expect eight hundred and seventy one thousand plus uh dollars reimbursement and for our department, that would be that seventy one thousand dollar supplemental that we're looking at.
Is, did the schools not provide anything?
Uh, not through us, they did direct.
They, so they are included though?
Yes, they're.
And how many counties did it cover, the FEMA decl- that we're asking for, was it us and Skamani together or?
I can't remember, no, there was a number of counties in, in the whole state.
Okay.
That, under that state declaration and that um then federal declaration, there was more than just us and Skamani. Yep, but yeah, the schools were able to do um their own process and we haven't been involved. Doesn't have to pass through us.
Do we know how long it's been sitting with the president's office?
I don't, like I said, we got word from the state just last week that it was there. So, and I think they told us anywhere from three to four weeks, we could expect a final answer.
Okay, and we don't have any need to use any of our federal representation delegation to try to push it through or anything?
No, that wasn't the indications we're given by state EMD.
Got it, well, if that changes, let me know.
Okay, yeah, and like I said, the most exciting part is that it's there and it's likely it will go through and that like I said, that emergency um funds that we expended or are expending for those permanent repairs in the seventy one thousand dollar range for the emergency radio system is likely to be completely reimbursed, so. That is very good news, that is the first time we've gotten uh damage assessment. If it, if it does go through in many years, most of the time either the state doesn't meet the, the whole dollar threshold to qualify or us as the county doesn't reach the threshold, the minimum um or for whatever reason it doesn't get approved and we, we do a lot of work to put all that information together, send it to the state, they do the same to send it to FEMA and then nothing comes of it. So I'm, I'm glad to see that this is probably gonna pay off. Yeah, and then we can talk about how that affects our budget center, fund balance and so on when we do receive that. Uh, in emergency management program training and exercises, you can see those, those are mostly updates, um we did participate in two communications exercises with the state emergency operations center and Washington State Department of Transportation, uh both on the same day, March thirtieth. Um, and that was a good success, um our program coordinator worked with our volunteers to uh deploy across the county and do damage assessments and report back to state DOT via radio with no technology in the middle. So that scenarios we run are to test those emergency communications if all other means have failed. And then the grants, you can see those updates there, I won't go through all of them, um continuations on most. The twenty four shush, um state homeland security preparedness grants, we did get the final notice of funding. Um, and instead of nine percent, the overall reduction was ten percent. Um, and at the state level, they're been asking us as counties, how would we wanna deal with that? There is the National Priority Area Projects, which is now projects that are competitive across the state, our projects have to compete with all other counties, including the large counties on the west end, which can be problematic um for the small counties, um so we're fighting for that representation and to get what we can. They were, they're asking to uh their terminology was fully fund, but it, it's not really fully funding all those projects, but fully funding the ones that are above the line we expected to get funding for in which it would take away from our which is called enduring needs, so our base funding that provides, you know, base operations for emergency management programs wages and benefits, um and move that to the competitive projects and we in region eight, the five counties including us have uh rejected that proposal in favor of reducing the number of competitive projects that are funded so that we all maintain our base. And uh I think that is unanimous across the state, there was one or two counties or regions, I should say, um that had questions and might have gone with the other option, but I think they saw better of that. Um, and in those national priority projects that we've already submitted, um the two PUD projects uh are above the threshold, our mobile command post uh updates uh did not make the cut. And one of the PUD projects might get cut further because of the ten percent decrease. We're keeping a close eye on that and staying engaged. We're keeping a close eye on that and staying engaged. You can see the information on the all hazards UAS team. The training that's gone on there, lessons learned and things being changed to adapt. I've also had a, an in-depth conversation. One of the DNR supervisors came down from Olympia last month, I believe it was. And came with a local DNR manager to talk about all things nine one dispatch and emergency management related to wildfires. And had a discussion with them about why we aren't being allowed to integrate into their incident management structure and use our own UAVs when we have a wildfire here, once the DNR takes over. Or they put up a NOTAM so that we can't fly. So we're continuing those, but they're not really willing to to let us participate, which is unfortunate. We are moving forward with the Ares group and getting that reorganized under the emergency management department and those volunteers to be registered to the state emergency worker program. As well as the Ares repeater up in the Simcoe Mountains. Getting that agreement with the city of Golden Dale to, for that to be located on their watershed property. We celebrated public safety telecommunications week last week. We did multiple ways of celebrating our comms officers throughout the week. On Wednesday, we had a barbecue and invited various representatives from public safety and elected officials. We recognized Michelle Cotterill as the communications officer of the year. And Pam Schilling for her thirty years of service to the county, which is this month, actually. Plus a number of other awards that we passed out throughout last year. And we recognize those people for a second time during that presentation. So and you probably could have seen a lot of that information on our social media. The burn ban. So I have been in conversations with all three of the fire chiefs in zone one. And they're now looking at instituting, recommending to us that we institute the county burn ban for zone one the week of May thirteenth. Again, trying to make sure that we, we make those decisions based on conditions on the ground and the practicality for our citizens and the real fire danger that is presented. Right now, we've already had several escape burn piles. Most, if not all of those are due to a lack of knowledge of how to safely burn to begin with. I, I personally actually went out and and mitigated an escape burn pile in my own neighborhood last week. And that burn pile had been burnt over a month ago. And because of the high winds, we had like forty five mile an hour winds on Sunday and Monday. And on my way home Monday night, there was a smoke plume. I knew they wouldn't be burning in those winds. They wouldn't have started it. So I investigated it and, and yeah, that. Yeah. So we're going to continue to push out our message on how to safely burn debris. But right now, the likelihood that we get a fast-moving wildfire from initial, initial ignition is still low. But these creeping escaped fires from burn piles have been going on, actually, we had, I think it was five of them in that warm spell. Was that the end of February, the first of March? We had a, a warm spell about a week, it got to seventy degrees one time. And we had five escape burn piles, one of which the DNR even responded to that early in the year. So people, even the longtime residents of the county are having to learn that fire hazard exists outside of the traditional fire season, which is usually, you know, sometime in June through September. But I'll be keeping a close eye on that. One of the good things and presenting you with the resolutions for those burn bans by zone as I get consensus from fire chiefs. DNR air operations resources for the county, what they're going to stage in our county, I was happy to hear. They're again going to have two helos at the airport in Dallasport. Under the DNR, Oregon Department of Forestry is also going to have two fire bosses or seats. People call them different things, they're the single-engine planes that scoop water out of the river. And those will be available, even though they're under contract with ODF, they will be available for use on our side.
Can we find out when that interlocal between Washington and Oregon kicks in? So we don't have another issue like last year where two fire bosses were sitting on the ground, but the contract started the next day and they weren't able to go to the tunnel five fire?
Yeah.
And can we make sure that if we need to, we can have a conversation with state EMS to make sure that if the contracts, if they're down there, the contract needs to be in place?
Yeah.
So we don't have guys sitting in planes not able to go fight a fire?
Yeah. And I, I think that's the agreement between the Washington State DNR and ODF for that, right? I will circle back with the DNR and ask that question.
Thank you.
Pretty confident they heard that message loud and clear in the moment last year. And it would correct that condition, but it would be good to get a confirmation, yes. Okay, is there anything else?
So on that emergency work group, you said two out of the three showed up, who didn't show up?
See work group.
You said two out of the three, the top page three. You said two.
They were representatives from sheriff's office and Golden Hill PD.
Okay, like Sam didn't show, right? That's my only question.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I don't have schedule.
Yeah, I'm doing good. Thank you, Jack. Finance committee update. Treasurer Greg Gallagher.
Good morning. This should be pretty quick, but just want to give you an update. We had a meeting on Friday, the nineteenth. And we talked about, we did receipt in the Q two landfill payment, so that will be included in April. We talked about the project that we're working on in the treasurer's office to have credit cards available to the special purpose districts that do not have bank accounts, such as fire districts and things like that with the, in, with the need for paying things electronically and everything like that. And also I've been working with the auditor to try to correct some of the duplicate payments and everything that come through the accounts payable, because we pay a lot of those invoices through the county special purpose district AP, so we're working on that. We had a discussion about natural resources transfers and cash JVs that we're still working on for twenty three and for twenty four. And we'll have a report at the next meeting on continued pieces of trying to get those straightened out. We are finalizing the licensing fund transfer, so we set up the licensing fund one, fund one forty six. And we decided that we wouldn't transfer that money until after February, because we wanted to kind of get through the first of the year payroll and all the things when we transferred everything over. So, so we kind of were firming up that and just working on cash JVs and everything so that we can get to working on the schedule six for the annual report. The auditor presented the SBITA and leases policies which are needed for the audit. And the SBITA is like systems that are on the internet that you pay a subscription for, that basically you have. And so there's a need to put those on the annual report now, so that we need to have a policy in place so we can identify what it is or what we don't have to put on there, so that we can set a limit like it's a capital, so we can set a limit at a certain amount. So she'll be, we reviewed those there and she'll be bringing those to the board. We talked about opioid money. And essentially, we had a good discussion. I think the, the group kind of just wanted, I know that Jen Neal has been working on this in the physical manager and she's been working with Erin Quinn. And basically, we kind of talked through it as kind of the, the pros and the cons and all the different parts and pieces. And this is about opting into the third settlement, I believe, and also all the parts and pieces around it. We've opted into one and two already. And basically, we came up with five, I'll call them bullet points or things to consider as the board determines what, you know, and these are things from an accounting perspective and different things. Because this would be your guys' decision at some point when this paperwork comes to you. But we do think that, you know, if we do accept this money, there will be, have to be county money that will be spent on it, even though we're getting opioid money with all the criteria and all the reporting that's going to go on with it. We may not be able to cover all that. So we'll have to, there will be, you know, it will cost us money to get the money. There is the possibility to outsource to a third party if we do manage it. So that was something that we thought seemed like a good idea. And maybe putting that into BOC non-departmental when the money comes in and flowing it through there. The, there are some conditions and requirements, and I believe Jen is going to present this to you guys at some point in time. But there's a lot of pieces in there, developing methodologies, having committees that have to go through all these things. There's a lot of pieces and parts into doing that and just making sure that we really understand. I think she has six items on here that are pretty well detailed out. And we talked about all of those, I mean, just in how it is and, and how we would do that. And a, a plan of directing the liaison or however we would do that, that was another part of how we would facilitate where the money would go. And it sounds like to participate in the third settlement, we'll have to make a decision by May eleventh. So you know, we just, it wasn't, we just had a discussion about where, what things, how, how we would facilitate it if and when this came to fruition. So I think that was kind of our points to consider. I think the, the key thing is Jen does have a lot of pieces of what would be required to do it. And there's a lot of stipulations that come with the requirements. And that is, I think, one of the reasons why there is an option to outsource. There's other folks that are interested in, you know, providing or being the outsourced person in this community. And that was something that seemed reasonable, but that's again, your guy, those were just things from the treasurer, the auditor, some of the folks around the table, just things that we would have to consider if we got that money.
Are the requirements from the number three the same as number one and number two? Or is it another additional requirement?
I think there are a lot, I don't, I can't answer that specifically, but my understanding is that they're all very similar. And I think those requirements are over the whole program. I don't think that the requirement, I think those requirements are for all of the money in general, in the one, the two and the three. They could vary a little bit, we'd have to ask Jen, she's really the subject matter expert in that. But I think that those are, that, that's the, that's just with that whole settlement in and of itself. In, in, you know, I think the diff, the ones, the twos and the threes are the different groups and the different people that are paying into that and how the money gets split out. So I think the requirements are essentially the same, but could be slightly different.
Are the funding amounts different between one, two and three?
Yep.
Okay. Less than three?
I don't remember what Jen had some of the numbers. I mean, and, and, and I, some of the numbers that we were looking at, you know, were, I mean, it wasn't like millions. I mean, we were talking in the tens of thousands. So, and there was some time to it. So I think she has a lot of the details. I think our thing is just to consider those pieces of how we, how, what we do, you know? I mean, i- it's one of those pieces where the money comes with a lot of strings. We did talk about tax title in the mill site. There was an email that went through the treasurer's association back a couple, just right not that long ago in regards to another county that had a cleanup type site, like what we've dealt with down there. And one of the pieces is in the environmental and health and safety RCWs, which is, I think it's seventy A. It defines an owner and the owner isn't somebody who gets the property. Because we got the property through tax title, we're different than being the owner if we were to have been the user of the site or different things, so our requirements are different. So as we move forward, I just think we need, that, that I just brought, we'd had some discussion about that the week before. So I just wanted to make sure that we, as we're looking through that, when we get to the, to the next phase, that we look at that, you know, in the tax title reference and also what our obligations are there. The RCW that has the definitions is seventy A dot three zero five dot zero two zero. And I can get you more information on it if you want, but we just talked a little bit about that. There were really no staff reports at the meeting or any other discussion. The only thing that we brought up during just general discussion was we are working on the surplus sale in the treasurer's office for the four pieces of equipment. And the next meeting would be the seventeenth of May. So that is all I have.
Good, thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Perfect, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks for coming over.
One thing that we did, this is back to the COVID times. We went out to fairgrounds and we had an all hands meeting. It was because we had dollars coming in, so it made it easier to have the discussion. But we haven't done that.
All hands, meaning?
Yeah, that's what I'm calling it, it's a term we use in the forest side. But it, where we bring all the electeds together and we talk about, you know, this goes a little bit back to strategic planning and setting the goals and maybe getting an update on where we're at with the finance program. And everything that we talked about, you know, at that meeting, we can go back and look at those notes and say, what did we accomplish from all the things that we talked about at that meeting? And maybe set some, some county goals and policies or priorities for the next year or so, at least through this year.
Yeah, and see how our priorities have changed.
Well, it was during COVID, so.
Yeah, and budgets.
The world's a different place. And the budget situation has definitely changed.
Yeah, I would be.
Yeah, that's, you know, one thing that this morning that I was forgot to mention is when we came on board, Dan and I came on board, we, we, we saw the, the writing on the wall in terms of the fiscal, fiscal issues. And I brought up, you know, how that's changed. One thing I didn't mention was is that we had a bunch of COVID dollars that helped float us through those years that we don't have anymore.
This is happening to everybody.
And it's happening to everyone. And we talked a lot about it at WAC in our evening, you know, about how everybody's dealing with it. I mean, when I was up in Skagit County, talking with them, you know, they're looking at major structural changes. We're far worse than we've ever had any discussions on. It's a.
Well, we have more things from the state that we're having to do too.
Yeah, well.
Dividing down our money.
We didn't talk about a coronary.
No, I know. Didn't want to bring up more bad news. But there are unfunded state mandates we're going to have to deal with.
Yep. I don't have anything else for the morning session.
I'm good, I'm going to entertain a motion for a break.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to recess for the lunch hour.
And I'll step down in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion here. Good afternoon, welcome back to the Klickat County Board of County Commissioners Tuesday meeting. So well, at least my agenda is missing. Jake's sharing, I got, I'm good. I was gonna say those, I thought this was mine, it was written all over. So, an update from Republic Services.
We have unfinished business.
Oh, there you are, okay, I see it. You got a reprieve too, I see what's above it. So unfinished business.
fairgrounds and we had an all hands meeting. Yeah.
They were, they've been working fast.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Been a while.
It has been.
You know, I'm going to give you a different copy of the sheet that Rob already printed out for you because I think there might have been a little bit of discrepancy.
Thank you. Good to meet you too.
Thank you.
So yeah, good afternoon. We just wanted to come provide you an update on what's going on out at the landfill and somewhat of our transfer stations here in the county. It's been a while since we provided an update and this is our kind of our first quarter update. You'll see that based on the information Steve given you, we've been kind of down in volume for the first quarter. Now, there's some reasons behind that. Some of it is those contracts we discussed last year that we do not have this year. But you'll see that we haven't lost as much as people would have thought based on that. Some of this is attributed to weather as well. Last January, when we, when I first started up at the landfill, our weather in January was much better last year than it was this year. So there was an impact on weather delays, causing some volume challenges in January. Overall, though, you'll see the report there, it just kind of lays out each of our contracts that we have that you're familiar with and, and where they're at as far as first quarter year to date. So we wanted to share that with you. And then some other things going on right now. We actually have an electric truck pilot project starting next week. They're going to bring one out, see if we can get an electric truck to handle that grade that we have out there. You can bet money on it or not, but we believe that we have a vendor that is stating they can produce a model that can handle that load. And we're hoping, hoping it does because that would be huge for the, everybody for sustainability. So yeah, next week we're going to bring one out and just pilot on a lighter load spec and see how it does. And we'll provide you an update on how that goes.
How light, much lighter of a load?
It'll be an 80,000 ton G V W load. So we'll just go with smaller cans.
Okay.
They can, they'll, they'll spec it for 110, believe it or not.
Yeah, for a full train.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is the plan to just test it and then bring in a stronger one, or is this thing supposed to be able to pull the 110?
Test it with what they can for 80, and if it looks like it's going to manage to do what it needs to do as far as their technology, then go out and spec the 110.
Oh, then they'll, they'll have to build a new one for the
And yeah, and if that works, right, we'll, we'll celebrate that as this, as it benefits this tire site, we'll go all support vehicles, everything onsite would go. Except for the yellow iron that pushes and manages the trash flow. But all of our rolling stock as far as trucks and support equipment go electric.
How how many megawatts do you expect that's going to take if you roll everything over? Massive, right?
Yeah, they're talking about 30 tractors, I think, currently on the island. That would be E V, not including support vehicles. So it's going to be a fairly substantial amount. The P U D has been a fantastic partner in terms of kind of evaluating this opportunity. There's a lot of great incentives in Washington to actually go electric. So there's actually some benefits for us and, and actually from a sustainability standpoint, but also cost savings of diesel versus, versus electricity. So it's going to be, it's going to be a great, great benefit to, to, to our operation overall, if we can make it work.
Do they figure it'll last all day or?
It'll last an eight hour, eight to 10 hour day. And it should have, it should be able to charge on its way down the grade. So once it does that, hopefully it gets what it needs out of it.
So basically what they've said is it will need about a 30 minute time during the day to charge, which would be basically lunchtimes. So, I mean, it's a pretty fantastic technology if we can pull it off because ultimately the drivers, generally when we've gone to E V trucks, route trucks, they tend to really enjoy them and like them. So we're hoping that, you know, from a, from getting employees to stay on board too, it could be a really nice benefit to keep employees there, a lot quieter. You know, just, just a better technology overall.
That's interesting.
So yeah, we'll have to test it through every element this area provides through summer, heat and winter, though it won't just be a one and done. But I think this pilot will give them enough to know whether there's going to be some challenges with the other specs.
Have you done any tests on big tractor trailers like this before?
No.
This is the first one in, in the company.
Most of the time we do collection vehicles that do your curbside, but not, not.
Are you doing just recycle or are you doing M S W too?
So currently the first round of trucks that are coming out from a route collection standpoint have been recycling routes, particularly in Boise. We're running, how many downtown, three?
There's three downtown.
Three downtown. We're, we're rolling out trucks into likely Corvallis area, Portland area, Southern California as well as Phoenix this year. So we're hoping by 2030 that roughly 60% of the trucks that we're buying will be E Vs to, to replace our current existing fleet.
And that's on the recycler on both?
Recycling. So the M S W is a little bit trickier simply because it's a heavier load. Ultimately, the technology that we have with the new truck that we actually partnered with Oshkosh on should be able to do the M S W as well. But those are going to be pilots to see whether they can sustain a full route.
Right.
And this pilot may help with that too. It's going to be pretty heavy.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, the, the benefit of E V two is we're, we're really kind of fortunate because some of our competitors started and really pushed natural gas facilities. To transition to natural gas hauling company to electric is very challenging because those two things just don't like each other very much. So we're only about 16%, I think Jeff, for renewable or natural gas. So we should be able to convert most of our hauling companies fairly quickly to, to E V around the country. So it's kind of a neat, neat and exciting time for for, for E V trucks in general.
Are you going to videotape your first run?
I'm pretty sure we'll have a team ready to do that. Traveling in from our headquarters in our area. Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we had a whole rundown of the sites, looking at where the locations of the E Vs would be, where the charging stations would be. So at a minimum, our support vehicles will likely be E V, but, but we're hoping that the trucks will be as well.
That's interesting.
So stay tuned.
Yeah.
More to come.
Another update for us, you know, this, we're getting into that time of year where we celebrate 2020, the previous year's results and, you know, I'm proud to say our, our site there as well as our other divisions in our, what we call business unit, perform well safety and safety. So we're going to recognize employees and the dolls on May 18th for an annual banquet to kind of honor them. You know, there was a challenge at last fall that you guys were aware of that we went through a union campaign, renewing their contract and we succeeded with that. And so we're rolling through another three year and things have been moving pretty well. Other than volumes, but the weather will improve and things will start, I think, going in the right direction. Any questions?
And I think from the only market standpoint that's currently happening right now is Island County is out to bid currently. That R F P is due in June. So, you know, I think we're going to be very competitive in, in that space. And we're hoping for the best in terms of winning it. That's about 50,000 tons a year. So we're, we're pretty confident that we can keep it.
Good.
That's the other one that's going through that intermodal.
Yep. So you'll keep it. So if you get it, you'll keep the intermodal then. But if you don't, you'd probably not need it for a while. How are things going with rail? Are we having any issues or is it operating smoothly?
Uh, it's been up and down. Most of it's because of their, their maintenance windows this time of year and the grain has been heavy. For the most part, we're getting what we're allocated to get. It's just their timing's been a little bit off, but nonetheless, it's still bringing what we need. Right now this month, we're just down on what we call our special waste volume. So it's been a little bit slower in March. You know, when you get your contaminated soils and that stuff. So, but it's starting to pick up again and we anticipate going into May, it's going to look promising like it did in February.
A lot of times with special waste projects, they're, they're, you know, they're projects. So sometimes things are delayed, funding doesn't happen right away. And, you know, we have a fairly healthy pipeline. It's just a matter of just when projects start.
I'm just, I'm trying to see, you know, it, it's showing that M S W is down 20%. And we were, were we expecting about 16% with the losses? So we're a little more than we were originally?
No, actually. So, so between the contracts that were lost, it's between Spokane, Skagit and Mason Counties.
How many, how many?
About, it's about 11%.
11%. So, so we should assume 11 and we're down 20 on that.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was alluding to is the weather issues in January. We're, this is measuring against prior year. And last year, the first quarter was pretty smooth sailing.
Yeah, and even some of our, our existing customers are down in volume, you know, economic cycles are happening. I mean, Snohomish County is down 4%. Which, you know, they're our largest customer. So anytime that, you know, a customer is down 4%, that's that large, it has significant impacts overall in terms of the overall percentage of, of waste.
So what do we, do we have any big contracts coming this year for special contracts? Anything that you see coming that we're, we're not seeing on here expected?
Uh, the R F P for Ireland is probably the, the only one that's kind of in cycle now. There's going to be some smaller opportunities up in British Columbia. Um, including Whistler and Cowichin Valley Regional District. We already have C V R Ds, but Whistler would be a new, a new contract, about 25,000 tons a year. So relatively small opportunities, looking at some other opportunities in the B C market as well. So those are generally smaller opportunities though. But really the opportunity in B C is the open market and, and, you know, investing in new infrastructure to handle that open market volume.
Mr. Van Cleve, did you have a question?
They'd like to come back quarterly, which I think is great. So I have to schedule this meeting and then work with you about if that's what you want to do going forward.
I like it.
I mean, particularly since your guys' budget is so highly focused in on the volume coming to landfill, it's good for you folks to have visibility on the volume and the waste streams coming in. Simply because it impacts your budgets so dramatically.
Are you going to stick around town for tonight?
I am.
Okay. Love to get together with you if you're going to be in town this afternoon. We'll have some time.
Forward to it.
Okay.
So I have an off topic question, kind of, what's, what do you know about what's happening with styrofoam?
Well, styrofoam in Washington state has been banned currently. Yeah, many states are actually passing similar, similar laws. The likelihood of styrofoam being around for any length of time, I think is, it's going to go away at some point.
Right.
Um, as soon as California bans it, which I think they're, they're going to, or if they haven't already done it, it, there's a timeline there. As soon as California does it, generally most of the country falls through just because the market, if you don't have the California markets, it doesn't make sense to do anything anywhere else. Um, I think there could be potentially new, uh, different types of plastics that could kind of take the place of that that are actually recyclable. I mean, the thing about styrofoam is you, you can't really, you can recycle it if you take it to a styrofoam facility. But the reality is, is it's, it's not really recyclable unless, unless you have one of those.
Yeah, I was wondering what people are going to do with it. I was talking to somebody from D O C and I think they said they had 67,000. Yeah, I was wondering what people are gonna do with it. I was talking to somebody from DOC and I think they said they had sixty-seven thousand containers or boxes of stuff that they ship out to their facilities and use for meals and stuff. Like, we don't know what we're gonna do with it.
Well, so, so DARTS was one of the largest manufacturers in the state of Washington. They're located, well, they were located in Tumwater. Um, as soon as the state of Washington passed the ban, they closed down their operation and left the state. Um, so that was actually one facility that was taking styrofoam. Um, however, they're no longer in business, at least here. Um, so really, there are very limited locations to take styrofoam. Um, now, it doesn't mean that, I mean, Amazon, I know, is working on some different uh packaging and that sort of thing. Um, most of the larger companies have actually kind of gotten away from styrofoam anyway. They're actually using kind of a cardboard type material to kind of do the similar thing. Um, there's some question marks whether that's even recyclable or not, though. Um, so it's kind of one of those things where it likely is, but at this point, you know, our Murfs are not um necessarily know how to deal with it because there's kind of a kind of, almost a waxy type thing to it, but it's it, it's not wax. It's a slick sort of a material.
What about changes in the organics laws in the state and how, and recycling that versus putting it in the waste stream?
So, you know, the, the legislature has tackled organics now two different times with two different uh pieces of legislation. Um, ultimately, California did this a few years ago. Now, the interesting thing about California is it took them almost twenty years to get to the point where they're at now. Washington has basically passed the same laws that California has had in three years. Um, so they've, in California, they've been working up to the diversion goals that they're working towards. Um, their goals in California is to reduce seventy percent of organics from the, the, the landfills. They're, they understand that you can't entirely ban organics because there's, there's really no way to do that. Uh, but their goal is seventy percent. Um, with that in mind, they're short currently about a hundred and fifty sites in California to actually meet their goals. So the challenge that we're gonna run into in Washington is, and the legislature didn't ask the right questions, which is with the Apple Maggot quarantine and the other issues that we have where you can't move waste from one side of the state to the other, and the best place to build composting facilities would be in central Washington because of, you know, less water, all that fun stuff. The fact is you can't take food waste into Apple Maggot territory. So you're gonna have to build these facilities in Western Washington. Uh, most of our facilities are already at full capacity. Uh, Cedar Grove, um Silver Springs, Skagit soils, literally, they're all, they're all maxed. Um, they're going through permit processes to expand their, their facilities, but the problem is running into um air permitting issues. Um, the state of Washington utilizes a a study that was done in Southern California for admissions um from composting facilities. Washington State University in the next year will be doing a study to actually determine how much actually emissions do come from composting facilities to actually get a Washington number, uh which might be actually um, as an example, Brady Trucking is someone that we partnered with, with Thurston County. Their facility can take seventy-five thousand tons a year of compostable material. Their permit limits them to only fifty thousand tons a year because of the air quality concerns. Um, so we actually have excess capacity within the system that can't be utilized because of air quality permits. And you can probably speak to that too with PRC, so.
Just a lot to disclose there that we have teams working on and, and I know everybody's getting excited about that bill and just constant conversations going on, so.
Well, we might be seeing it from the opposite side because if it's being diverted, it's no longer going into the landfill. What kind of a reduction uh can we expect for that in terms of tons when we look at our waste stream?
Hmm, that's a great question and it's something we haven't really tested to see. I, I, you know, it may not be as drastic as you think because we are already bringing in material that's coming from areas that do a lot of good recycling already. So.
That, really, the, yeah, I, I.
I would say maybe, I, I'm just gonna throw out maybe ten percent, fifteen.
Yeah, the challenges you're gonna see.
Possibly.
Yeah, the challenge you're gonna see is that where you're gonna move the dial on, on organics and food waste in general, or it's commercial facilities, and that is gonna be the hardest material to handle. Um, you can't really compost material from restaurants and that sort of thing because the odor would be too substantial. So you need anaerobic digesters, you need other things to kind of handle that uh, that stream. A- and we just don't have the infrastructure currently. Um, I mean, there's a lot of aspirational hopes that, that you know, all these facilities are gonna be built. I would say we're ten to probably ten years away from seeing any significant movement on commercial food waste. Uh, just because the, the amount of infrastructure just isn't there currently. Um, I mean, you're talking about air, anaerobic digesters are very, very expensive. Um, we have been able to utilize in California existing wastewater treatment plants and their uh anaerobic digesters for commercial food waste. Um, the other thing is, is that the key point is enforcement. We actually have a city in California that has a mandatory commercial food recycling program. Um, and currently only forty percent of the businesses are actually even using it, even though they're paying for it. So until that community actually starts finding people, they're not gonna participate. So there's a lot, I think there's a lot to still be determined in terms of what the actual impacts overall are gonna be.
Yeah, and Commissioner Wild guess is based on, without doing a study on food waste and all, or all organic, not just what we know as grass and leaves and.
Right. Yeah, most of our current, most of our customers currently um have curbside organics programs, which does include food waste as well. Uh, in Thurston County, they collect a, a, a certain amount of food waste within the, the curbside program. Uh, Snowmish, King County. So, you know, we're seeing some impacts currently to our current stream, but I don't think it's gonna be significant for, for a pretty good length of time, simply because I think that we just don't have the infrastructure to handle it. Again, it's gonna be one of those things where.
With that diversion, how is that going to impact our methane production and the composition at the landfill? What do you think? If that changes over, over time?
Uh, that's a good question. It may be worth exploring with our PUD partners on how that would impact. Um, I, I really don't know at this time. Based, it'll depend on how much volume we determine is going in there.
Right.
That contributes to that. And we just haven't done quite the study for that yet.
And again, I think there's, it's too early to really guess what, what the impacts are gonna be simply because we don't have the infrastructure. Um, now, if, if all of a sudden a whole bunch of anaerobic digesters start popping up and, and then we can start seeing um some impacts. We do have some private uh equity firms that are trying to start facilities in Washington, one in Longview. Um, legitimately, for that facility to pencil out, they're gonna need a hundred thousand tons of commercial food waste. And it's not there.
It's a lot of food waste.
They, that would basically, they would need to get the entire amount of food waste from Portland and Seattle to make that even pencil.
Really?
So, yeah. So the likelihood of, of any of these folks really being successful in that field, I, I, I'm just not.
Without heavy subsidization.
A- and without having access to the waste stream.
Yeah.
Because right now they're, they're parties, so they're gonna have to partner with companies like ours to, to get that waste stream. Um, and the reality is, is that um we're kind of doing our own thing on that front anyway. So there's really no need for us to kind of partner with other ones unless there's a great technology that makes sense. But at this point, that's not there.
Uh.
Is the county interested in setting up a digester, Commissioner?
You're gonna haul it in by rail?
Well, we could consider that option. Mm hmm. We have the space out there, so.
Is that something the company would be interested in?
It just depends. We, like I said, we, it's still early to, you know, project what that would look like, but certainly something we should all be considering.
Yeah.
As we move through this bill.
I mean, we, we know these aren't the last of the bills that are gonna get passed and sooner or later, there's gonna be a stick, not just a carrot.
Right.
And if we've got the space and there's no one around to, to cry about the smell, um, it's definitely an option.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think there's absolutely a lot of potential opportunities to get creative in terms of dealing with this waste stream. So um, I think we're keeping all options on the table and, you know, any, you know, if it seems like a reasonable idea, we're gonna investigate.
Mm hmm. So stay tuned. We'll keep you uh, you know, apprised of that as well. And if those ideas come to fruition, to bring to the table.
Um, individual large accounts, are we seeing any movement there about bringing on any more individual large accounts?
Um, not at this stage.
No. Okay. And that last one we discussed, are we seeing any movement on that group? Last year?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Now, so, so there, we, we proposed uh, uh some numbers to them and ultimately they have to decide kind of what they want to do. Um, and, and ultimately, you know, they're, they're going through some transitional changes as well. Um, so once those transitions happen, then, then maybe we'll be in a better position to, to kind of deal with them or work with them.
Good. Uh. I'm gonna go over this and I'll ask you questions when uh we get together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And the one benefit that we have seen is with ACT Enviro, which is a company that we recently acquired. Um, they actually have been, they're, they're environmental services company, just like UBS Ecology.
The one that we're using?
Yes, for, for HHW. Um, they actually have had several large projects that they've direct hauled to the landfill. So we're seeing some benefits from the environmental services side of the company as well, about seventeen thousand tons. So that's uh, anytime that we get these larger projects, that's always a benefit because they're internalizing it to us. So I think more to come on that front.
That's been our focus, this event work we're talking about. It's trying to bring more direct hauls to the landfill versus using rail. And so that's what we've been working on pretty well in the last quarter. We're gonna keep driving that initiative, so.
Is there any way to get not just January twenty-four, twenty-three, February, March? Could we get that a little bit further back? So it's not a one year, but more like a three year look back?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Be nice to see, you know, at least for our MSW accounts, what kind of growth we're seeing over the course of time.
Mm hmm.
You know, so that we can get rid of the blips.
Well, it, it's kind of an interesting deal where most of our municipal customers are actually down in volume. Um, Southeast Alaska is down almost forty percent. Um, Thurston County, I think, is the only one that's up and they're like four percent. Um, so I, I'm not sure exactly if that's an indication of some sort of economic downturn or, or what the case is. Um, construction is still going strong in Thurston County. In other communities, it slowed down. Generally, that's an indication that you know, we're, we're getting some sort of economic slowdown, so.
Some of its packaging changes they're making to go more recycling, pulling that out. So you'll see some of that in these numbers as well.
But it's pretty, when, when I talk to solid waste managers, they're seeing an interesting change, which is a lot more customers going through their transfer stations, but less volume. So less, less route truck volume, more kind of customer count volume. So it's kind of an interesting time. Um, a lot of people are going to like home composting and other things where they're trying to do more sustainability things. So maybe that, that's an impact, but it's, it's, it's an interesting time, so.
I, I find it interesting. We're down, you know, eight percent, which is about the exact same amount we're down in sales tax revenue. I believe that it's, that as sales tax revenue goes down and and I've always thought, you know, how we know recessions are coming is when your guys' tonnage starts dropping off. And you're, you're an indicator species in essence.
We are indeed. The housing industry is actually even more so. So um, the good news is, is that the housing market is mixed all over the country. So it's, it's not, it's not it's not doom and gloom everywhere, but, but there's definitely some, some areas that are in worse shape than others.
Okay. Well, it's been a long time, guys. Thanks for coming in and giving us an update. Um, it was timely. Uh, we're definitely, you know, using the numbers now that we were through the first quarter to, to figure out, you know, our budget for the year. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll get on the calendar for the next quarter as well.
All right.
We'll see you both later.
See you soon. Bye.
Yes.
Hmm. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Now you wanna use the mic?
Yes, yes. Um, Jeff Hunter brought it to my attention that um, I know um White Salmon, the, the cleanup is, was looking to have Public Works be on site. And I think Public Works estimated that about four thousand dollars. So um, we did check in to see if we could use the grant funds for that. And it's my understanding, Mackenzie uh told you if we couldn't or we couldn't get reimbursed. So then the question, discussion came, is there money in this solid waste fund to do that? The short answer is yes. The long answer might be no. The two unknowns, um, well, the one un- unknown is, is we move, starting, I think in May, being in compliance with the new revised contract with Republic, we're covering the transportation costs now for the transfer stations, and that's an unknown that was not included in the ecology grant or in our budget. So whatever that additional cost will be, we just don't know yet at this point.
Uh, for the environmental services?
Yeah, the oil and those kind of things. Uh, we've been paying the cost, but under the revision, now we also pay the transportation cost. We're covering the full cost. We just don't know what that is yet. And then I've been tasked with uh moving horse thief at, finally out of post closure. And so we anticipate uh an RFP process to get a testing firm and then the actual testing of, that is not included in the budget either. So um the one cost to Republic is it's, we just have to do it to be in compliance. Horse thief, we should do it. We've been working on it a long time. So yes, two thousand dollars we have at the day and we could do it, but that doesn't mean that uh we won't need help later in the year depending on the transportation cost and/or the cost to horse thief. So if you want me to do it, we can do it. And then the other unknown that I suspect Public Works is also gonna start grappling with is every community now has a cleanup. So if, if uh we participate in one, which is great, uh White Salmon's a very established um cleanup, then there'll be some expectation potentially at other community cleanups that we also participate. So um, right now it's just the one, but there's, I think, seven now, community cleanup, which is great. I'm just not, I know solid waste won't be able to cover the cost for that and I anticipate Public Works is no longer able to do that either. Um, so that's a budgetary question, I suspect, that comes up. So we put our budget together next year. So if you want me to come up with the two thousand, I can do it, but I can't guarantee I won't be back.
I think it was four, wasn't it?
Well, he said he'd split it with me.
Okay.
It's a Jeff deal.
It's a Nordstrom sale.
It's, I mean, either way, it's, it's still coming from us. It's, it's just what fund is coming out of, right? I mean, it's either facilities coming up at two thousand and solid waste coming up at two thousand, which.
Right. Um, but facilities is part of the general fund. The
Yes.
Solid waste is its own fund. And we have not been increasing the amount they get from the landfill every year as employee costs have risen four percent for the last two or three years. We haven't adjusted the.
Are you talking about solid waste that?
Solid waste fund.
That we haven't been also paying for a director for three years?
Uh, that's true. But the other cost for other employees is.
What's our fund balance in solid waste right now?
Uh, I think Jen sold me a hundred and fifty-three thousand. We've got the money today. I'm just, if the transportation costs are thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred thousand, we have no idea. That's not included in the cash balance or the budget, so.
How, how does this sound? Um, we asked staff or Jeff to let them know, try to find somebody. Um, and if they can't find somebody, you know, two days before, then we'll do it the second day's worth. Um, but if they can find, you know,
Volunteer.
A volunteer that's willing to, you know, go down there with their excavator, um, you know, and dump it in there.
You mean a volunteer county employee?
No, volunteer company.
Gotcha.
That's willing to do it. So have them talk to Community Days, A and E. There's a couple other groups that might be willing to, to take their excavator down for a second day and do it. And so we can do one, they can do one.
And I think it's this weekend, correct? I think the cleanup is circa two weeks. It's pretty close.
You know what it is? White Salmon clean, community cleanup, is it May twenty?
It's before May twenty.
May, what is it?
Yeah, I thought Jeff told me it's next week. That's why he was needed an answer today, so.
What do you think? Just do it?
I would, well, I would like to try to find, but if we're close time, we're gonna have to just do it.
Yeah, I have the money today. I'm happy to do it. I just can't guarantee what it looks like. Um, at the end of the year.
I would say never sniff a good fish.
We're pre-warned.
Um.
No surprises.
Uh huh.
Yeah, this should have been a conversation we had with Public Works a month and a half ago. Um.
And I think there's a bigger discussion about now almost every community in the county has them and good for that.
But they're also getting different, those guys are dropping off different containers where you can just walk it in versus.
And the Golden Dale one's different because they do a lot.
Yeah, they do it at the, the bus station.
Typically, if a community gets something from the county, the other communities are looking, can't blame them. We just should have.
They're getting stuff too.
Should have a policy discussion at some point.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's this weekend?
See, I was right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't.
What do you think? Just do it?
Yeah, just do it this time.
All right.
Next year, we'll.
But next time, he's in for seventy-five.
I don't know. You can tell him you saved him.
You do know, now you just have to save a little, negotiate harder on the land or the remediation of the old landfill. I don't think he wants to play today.
He's busy.
To those guys.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
I've got a lot of meetings to get to.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, I would make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting. Um, I would note that there are no workshops, workshops scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Um, I would also note that, uh, two commissioners will be attending the case of PDA meeting this evening downstairs. Six o'clock?
Yes.
Six o'clock. Uh, and then we also will be closing our commissioner's office at one o'clock on Wednesday, May first. And will remain closed on Thursday and Friday, uh, for staff training. I don't think we have anything else. We're both gonna be at, is there?
No, I think that's it. So I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.